Are they on? We're live?
Live at five.
Okay, so could I just stir up, call the board? I don't know if you've noticed, but our charlottetown.ca website is down. And our apologies, it's been down since last week. And it's no doing on our part, it's with the platform host Civic Live. So they're trying to troubleshoot, get it fixed, and we just have to wait. And today I learned that Dave Store, who's with the Gerty, his mother passed away early this morning. Gladys, she was at Whisperwood Villa. And then Morgan Coe, who's one of our maintenance people up here, she works up here at City Hall and works with, I think, Public Works and Beautification, her grandmother passed away, Dolores Myers. So our sympathies go out to both Gladys and Dolores who passed away. Counselor Ranty?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. And Mrs. Store was on the Senior Advisory Committee for years.
Oh, was she?
Yes, she was. So she put a little bit of crap back in the same room. She's a very nice lady.
Well, as I said, I spoke to David today, and I said, "David, you know, our apologies, our sympathies, condolences are with you and the family." And last but not least, on February 11th this week, Vince Mulliken will be celebrating his 80th birthday.
Ooh, he smokes.
So he's out in Calgary, and he wants me to send a video or something like that, so we might even just take the livestream from here. Happy birthday, Vince, and many, many more.
You got a bet's paid off, I believe.
Okay, so I will move on. Declarations of conflict of interest, any?
I have one, Your Worship, in finance for the tender, for the resolution that's in.
In finance?
In finance.
Okay, anymore? Okay, prove of the agenda. Counselor Ramsey, move by Counselor Ramsey, second by Counselor Duffy. Any questions, all in favor? Okay.
Aye.
Gregory, Counselor Vergh, aye. Counselor Twill?
In favor.
Counselor Bernard?
In favor.
Counselor McLeod?
In favor.
And am I missing someone? And Counselor Duran?
In favor.
Okay. So you have the adoption of the previous draft minutes, you have the regular meeting of January 11th, 2021. Special meetings open January 6th and 27th. And the public planning meeting that was held on January 26th at the Rod Royalty. Someone want to put a motion to it? Okay, move by Counselor Duffy, secondary Counselor Ramsey, to approve the adoption. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Good, all agree, so it's 10-0.
Aye.
Okay, business arise, favor at the minutes. Counselor Ramsey, no business at the minute?
Same answer.
Okay, so we can move on. Reports of committees. First committee, standing committee is Planning and Heritage chaired by Counselor Mike Duffy. Do you want to give your report, sir?
Thank you, Worship. We have, good evening, everyone. We have nine resolutions to pass tonight in one first reading of bylaw. The first resolution is, concerns the activity in the summer hour, summer season, at the bottom of Great George Street, where the restaurateurs and bars and gift shops and that operate, especially those ones that are on floating platforms or whatever, in addition to small STRs, for lack of a better term, three or four of them. These are conditions that have to be met by the business people down there in order to participate in the summer business. Not only this one, but the second resolution we have tonight is similar, but not exactly the same. It's the same area of town, but this one's at the bottom of Waymouth Street. It doesn't have multiple suppliers, as does the one at the bottom of Great George Street. It only has one restaurant at the bottom of Waymouth Street. But we'll deal with that one when we come to it. Mr. Forbes is here, can you add any answers to any questions that he may have? Thank you, Worship.
Any questions to the Chair of Planning and Heritage?
Yeah, I, I have one, Your Worship.
Counselor Duran, go right ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for your report, Counselor Duffy. I've been asking about this for a couple of years now, and it can't seem to get an answer, and the snow really kind of hits at home. I'm concerned about businesses pushing their snow to the property line, and then the snow melts and floods those homeowners. I brought this up with the Emergency Emergency Services Committee, and they said it should come here. I don't know exactly if the file under what bylaw, to stop this from occurring, but in our ward, we had a couple of businesses, and they pile the parking lot, and it goes up quite high, and then when it starts to melt, the homeowners are very fearful of getting flooded. So I'm wondering, is there any way we can, you know, either improve a bylaw or make one that would stop it, you know, I guess, you know, a certain height or something? Maybe you could have a suggestion on that?
Thanks, Counselor Duran. Do you want to speak to it?
I'll just clarify a little bit, but sure, then the Chair can, so the issue is...
Is that all right?
Sure, yes. Yeah, the issue is that if you're on private property, if your removal of snow is the responsibility of the property owner, so they should be, they should be removing that snow, trucking it off, not pushing it onto the adjacent property. But if they're pushing snow off of their property, onto the right-of-way, or, you know, onto an adjacent property that's not their own, particularly if it's ours, that's what we call a quirk's. I just wanted to clarify. And it's very difficult, like when people have snow in the wintertime, like that winter we had, 2015, like, there's just nothing in a bylaw that deals with, I guess, what the Counselors alluding to. But snow on individual properties is the responsibility of the property owner, and they should be following reasonable practices. But pushing snow off of their property into the right-of-way, that would be public works. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And if Mr. Chair, you want to follow up?
Mr. Forbes took the words right out of the mouth.
Okay, you all right? Fine, great. Counselor Duffy, or Counselor Duran, no follow-up?
Yeah, I just, so where do I go with this? You bring it up with Public Works, is that where I have to see if they could do something about that aspect?
Exactly.
It depends on where the snow's coming from, where the snow's going. I mean, if it's one neighbor pushing it onto the lot line, and the neighbor next door is suffering from that action, I would assume it's a civil matter between these two, and those two are going to have to work it out. But if he's pushing it onto the city street, as Mr. Forbes said, and it's causing problems because of where it's being placed, that would be a matter for the city to take under advisement. Correct?
Good. You all right there, Counselor Duran?
Yeah, that helps. I'll have to see where it goes from there, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Counselor Yankoff, you did raise your hand.
No, I, I will wait until we get to that resolution.
To that point, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Kelly, you want to read out the first resolution to Macklear Drive, correct?
Yes, Your Worship. Move by Counselor Duffy, second by Counselor McCabe. That Council rescind the previous resolution dated December 4th, 2020, as it pertains to Bell Mobility Tower at Two Macklear Drive, PID 441139, and replace it with the following resolution. And that the City of Charlestown acknowledges that they have been consulted by Bell Mobility through their agent, WSP Canada Inc., in accordance with the City of Charlestown telecommunications tower siding requirements as it relates to the proposed antenna system, Bell Mobility Tower at Two Macklear Drive, PID 441139. That the City of Charlestown has reviewed the information provided, and acknowledges that a public consultation program has been completed, and that the tower, 22 meter in height, be located at least 17 meters from Mount Everd Road, with the provision that the proposed tower accommodate co-location be approved.
Okay. Questions called.
Your Worship, I had forgotten that we had a resolution under our Planning Committee, rather than Planning Board, so that's the confusion I had caused here. I was speaking to the resolution concerning, at the bottom of Great George Street or the bottom of Waymouth Street. I'd forgotten that at the first of the resolutions, we had a resolution regarding this tower.
Yes.
Therefore, anybody sitting here wondering why I was talking about Great George Street when we're talking about a tower on Mount Everd Road, that's due to my oversight that we had that tower under the committee.
Yeah. It's, let's read here, it's Planning and Heritage Committee.
Not the Planning Board.
That's right.
So I apologize for that.
Okay, any questions? Okay, question was called?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor, I'll have to do the roll call. Counselor Yankoff? What, what's that?
He said, "Aye, Your Worship." Counselor Duran?
Counselor Duran said, "Aye," okay. Counselor Yankoff?
Yes.
Counselor Duffy?
Yes.
Counselor Duran, yea. Counselor Twill?
In favor.
Counselor Vergh?
In favor.
Counselor McLeod?
In favor.
Counselor Ramsey?
In favor.
Deputy?
In favor.
Counselor McCabe?
Aye.
And Counselor Bernard?
Yep.
Okay, so that's...
I'm not in favor.
You're, oh, you're against?
Yes.
Okay, so that's 9-1, and 9-1 with Counselor Duran, not in favor. Got that? Okay, you have another...
Your Worship, move by Counselor Duffy, second by Counselor McCabe. That's request for a major variance for the temporary placement of floating structures uses, including three floating cottage vessels on the water lot located at 5 George Street, PID 335307, in accordance with the site plan, Attachment A2, the elevation plan, Attachment A3, and the letter of intent, Attachment B, as attached in the Planning Board Report, Plan 202101, February 6A-1, be approved, subject to the operator-owner adhered to the attached conditions.
Okay.
And they should be read out, Worship.
Is that, sir?
They should be read out as well.
Can you even read that?
Your Worship.
Go ahead.
Planning number one, conditions, must meet and maintain any and all federal acts, regulations, and standards concerning location and use. Two, must meet and maintain all provincial acts, regulations, and standards concerning location and use. The floating docks must be designed by an appropriate engineer with the appropriate documentation provided to the city, and must not exceed low capacity or be altered in any way. Only engineered docks will be permitted for use. Number four, confirmation from the Fire Department that the Fire Prevention Bylaw NFPA 303 and NFPA 96 requirements have been met. Number five, confirmation from the City Water and Sewer Department that uses of the floating development are fully connected to the city sewer and water supply. And number six, a copy of insurance for the floating development that provides third-party liability coverage for operators, the owners of the water lot, and the City of Charlestown. And number seven, that the applicant provide documentation from the federal government having jurisdiction that the boughhouses are registered vessels.
Okay. So are these publicly, publicly posted, or just part of the resume?
Part of the resume, Worship.
Okay, any questions? Counselor Yankoff, word one.
More so just a comment. We went through this identical process about this time last year, maybe a little bit later. And the plan was that if we wouldn't be back here this time again, we would have created the documentation and the work that was required to turn this thing into a permanent thing, but we didn't. And I'm just wondering if Alex, you could speak to that. I know what you meant, you alluded to that we ran out of time, because I know that the department was very busy. And if you could just explain to us, to Council, while we're here, a year later.
Okay. Could we just add, is that all right, Mr. Chair?
Sure, no problem, Ms. Vergh.
Yeah, so Alex, can we just get this question answered first? Counselor Bernard?
For sure, yeah.
Okay, go, go ahead, Alex.
So the issue on the, the reason that this isn't a straightforward amendment is it's dealing with three levels of government. Took us a long time to get a legal opinion on this, so, you know, we, you know, we've been trying to work these things out, and we're hoping that we have the solution. We did go to the Planning Board, the last Planning Board meeting, and laid up the framework for how the permanent process would work, and the recommendation of the Planning Board at that time. We would send that to Mr. Hooly, which, who has that documentation, and because he did that original legal work, that hopefully he can confirm that the process that we've established. All I can say is that's a very unique land use down there, and it's not, it's not a standard bylaw amendment, so it took a little bit of time. But I think the key thing is, is that we get it right, and that particularly, I rarely send things to Mr. Hooly, but in this case, it's critical that we, we get this one right. Thank you, Worship.
And Counselor Yankoff, are you also asking, will this follow up in a public consultation? Is that right?
I think it will.
Yes, it will.
It will?
Yeah.
And timeline, where are we looking at timeline there, Mr. Forbes?
As soon as Mr. Hooly gives me, gives me the nod, I will, we will hopefully be able to loop that back to either Planning Board and Council, and get that back to a public meeting.
Good, is that all right? Counselor Bernard?
Yeah, just cross the nation, I'm just wondering, on Board Six, on the Water and Sewer Department?
Yeah.
Where parts of the development fully connect the city sewer and water supply, are we also part of the gray water too? Then will be connected to the city sewer, I think, will it?
Your Worship, through to the Counselor, it's my understanding that's a closed system, and if anything, if gray water may be allowed in certain circumstances, we go in to the harbor, but whatever the provincial and municipal requirements are, they need to adhere to that. But I think in this case, I think it's a 100% closed system.
Is that all right, Counsel Bernard?
Yeah.
Any other questions? Question?
Questions called.
Counselor Ramsey? And second, okay, all those in favor, up to the school. Counselor Yankoff, yea. Counselor Duffy?
Yes.
Counselor Duran?
In favor.
Counselor Twill?
In favor.
Counselor Vergh?
I'm in favor.
Counselor McLeod?
In favor.
Counselor Ramsey?
In favor.
Counselor McCabe? Counselor Bernard?
In favor.
Okay, I have that one, Mr. Kelly. Okay, 10-0 for the record, they're facing. Five. Five, five. Okay.
Your Worship, move by Counselor Duffy, second by Counselor McCabe. That's request for a major variance for temporary placement of the floating eating and drinking establishment on the water lot identified as 1 Waymouth Street, PID 335430, in accordance with the site plan, Attachment A2, and the letter of intent, Attachment B, as attached in the Planning Board Report, Plan 202101, February 6A-2, be approved, subject to the operator-owner adherence to the attached conditions. One, must meet and maintain any and all federal act regulations and standards concerning the location and use. Two, must meet and maintain all provincial acts, regulations, and standards concerning the location and use. Three, the floating docks must be designed by appropriate engineer with the appropriate documentation provided to the city, and must not exceed low capacity or be altered in any way. Only engineered docks will be permitted for use. Number four, confirmation from the Fire Department that the Fire Prevention Bylaw NFPA 303 and NFPA 96 requires have been met. Number five, confirmation from the City Water and Sewer Department that uses and the floating development are fully connected to the city sewer and water supply. And number six, a copy of insurance for the floating development that provides third-party liability coverage for operators, the owners of the water lot, and the City of Charlestown, Your Worship.
Okay, Steamer's right, Alex?
Correct, yeah.
That's not the current name, but that's the same.
No, it's the old name, yeah. Steamer's too. Okay, any questions? No?
Same rules and regulations, make it through first.
Same as the 5 Great George Street.
Yeah. Okay, questions called.
Questions called, okay. Counselor Yankoff?
In favor.
Counselor Duffy?
In favor.
Counselor Duran?
Favor.
Counselor Twill?
In favor.
Counselor Vergh?
In favor.
Counselor McLeod?
In favor.
Counselor Ramsey?
In favor.
Deputy? Counselor McCabe? Yes?
Yeah.
Counselor Bernard?
Favor.
10-0. 10-0.
Your Worship, move by Counselor Duffy, second by Counselor McCabe. That's request for two variances to reduce the side yard setback requirements from 1.83 meters, or six feet, to approximately 0.91 meters, or three feet, and reduce the front yard setback requirements from 6.0 meters, or 19.7 feet, to approximately 5.1 meters, or 16.7 feet, to accommodate an addition to an existing single detached dwelling at 1 Owen Terrace, PID 276378, be approved, subject to the conditions as attached. Conditions, no window or door openings maintained along the south building elevation, and two, no structure encroaching into the reduced side yard setback.
You want to give some explanation to that, Counsel?
Yeah.
Comment, Your Worship.
Yeah, can we just get, ask the Chair to speak to it first, or you want...
All I want to mention, Your Worship, is that this application from Owen, Owen Terrace, and the next one from Canary Court, I believe it is, those are the only two tonight that are presented in the approval form where the planning officer has indicated that she disapproves of... This one, for the front, the front variance, the three feet from the front of the new garage that's going to be built, they want a three-foot variance there. And the other one is on Canary, with the massage therapy there, we'll deal with that. So all of this to say, it's the same old story, that she approved, she agrees with the variance on the side, the three feet on the side, but she doesn't agree with the three feet on the front, so... And she, as her words, she refuses that part of the application. So if folks are going to deal with this as an approval 100%, it would be appreciated, as we've discussed before, that they would give the reason for that particular 180 to the planning officers' recommendation. Thank you, Worship.
Counselor Vergh?
I have another question.
Is that Counselor Vergh, or is that me? Counselor McLeod, you want to go first, Counsel McLeod?
Yeah, please. Thank you very much, Counsel Duffy, for your report. I'm the Counselor for that area Ward Two. Anytime, anytime I get to see an R1 stay in R1, is a great thing. I do appreciate planning input and work into this, that bylaws are important, and... But sometimes, you know, sometimes a bylaw doesn't always stick to common, common good and sense of a project. With this one, I decided to, with the applicant, Mr. McKerny, I went, I decided I wanted to find out for myself, so I went door to door to both up on St. Pius, and some on St. Lang, and all of Owen Terrace, and the comments were overwhelming in favor. It's good to see Mr. McKerny moved back into the neighborhood. He grew up there, and the property was sold in the 80s, and he's moving back in. And with today's standards, homes are changing a bit, and we expect more space, so... I know it's considered to be a major variance in the eyes of the planning and bylaw, but, you know, if you look around the street, there are other locations where the bylaws weren't met either, so, you know, for me, it's 100 to 100 for me, Counsel Vergh, that this project is really good to keep an R1 in R1. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, was it Counselor Vergh? Did you?
No, I have a question.
No questions, okay. No other questions? Okay, question?
Questions called.
Questions called, okay. All those in favor, Counsel Yankoff?
In favor.
Counselor Duffy?
No.
No?
No.
Counselor Duran?
In favor.
Counselor Twill? Counselor Twill?
In favor.
Counselor Vergh?
I'm in favor.
Counselor McLeod?
In favor.
Counselor Ramsey?
In favor.
Deputy? Counselor McCabe? And Counsel Bernard?
In favor.
Okay, so it's 9-1, Counsel Duffy opposed. Good?
Your Worship, move by Counsel Duffy, second by Counsel McCabe. That's request to permit a massage therapy business as a home occupation used within the proposed single detached dwelling at 32 Canary Court, Lot 15, PID 1123058, be approved, subject to the conditions as attached, which states, Your Worship, that hours of operation Monday through Friday is 8 to 4 p.m., up to four appointments per day, one employee, the owner of the proposed dwelling, and served by onsite parking, two-car garage, and double driveway, Your Worship.
So Counselor Duffy, do you want to reiterate the recommendation?
Yes, it's the same, same setup, Your Worship. The only difference here is the Development Officer cited the fact that medical, medical office hours weren't permitted as a home occupation over dental hours. That was one of her basis for not approving, not recommending approval, I should say, to this application. And the second was, this is a developing area, right off of Trailview.
Trailview?
It is Trailview. Yeah, and there's, there's very few homes built there yet, but it's an up-and-coming place. So it, to put this home occupation in at this point in time in the development may not prove to be the wisest thing to do, but that was, that's an opinion only. And the other thing that she brought to the fore was the fact that the city didn't have the wherewithal of enforcing when things didn't go exactly according to plan, or other people would buy the home and have another sort of business that wasn't exactly smiled upon. So that was her justification, her grounds for recommending a rejection. Thank you, Worship.
Counsel, Mr. Chair, with the home occupation permit, does it have to be renewed every year?
I don't believe so.
No, it doesn't have to be reviewed, as soon as it's issued, it's issued.
Right, yeah.
But it doesn't carry on to a new homeowner? Correct?
No.
Like, if I, if they sold the house, would it carry on with that new owner?
For that occupation. Exactly.
Same occupation, correct?
Got you, just wanted to clarify. But if a shoemaker went in there, that's a whole different ball of wax. Deputy?
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to echo what the Chair of Planning said. He took some of the points out of my, out of my mouth here, so I won't regurgitate them, but I would like to draw the attention to the, to a letter that was written by Arnold McCray, who is the developer of the property. And the intention of the development was simply for residential occupancy, so the Chair's right, this is a new area, people that purchased the land in there to buy or to build a house, never thought in a million years that they'd be dealing with an application like this. So I would ask Council to support staff's recommendation here in rejecting this application.
Okay. Any other comments? Questions? Hearing none? Oh, go ahead, Counsel McCabe, I forgot to mention, just when we're here, we're just trying to use, could you stand when you speak? I'm sorry about that. Sorry that I didn't do it.
That's okay. I'm just wondering if there's any covenants in place in this new subdivision.
Your Worship, covenants are, covenants are really things that the developer imposes. Now, I don't know the answer to that, because we're, the zoning bylaw is, overrides everything. Covenants tend to be a little bit more restrictive, and if they exist, I suspect he would have indicated, Mr. McCray, that that was violating those covenants, and the applicant would have known it, so I'm suspecting not, but again, we don't, we don't track and follow covenants in various subdivisions.
Counsel, is that all right? Do you want a secondary question? Counsel Ramsey?
Thank you, Worship. Thank you, Counsel Duffy. It's saying that the Planning Board approved it, and now we're saying, I'm hearing two different stories here, about being rejected, and then approved, so, I mean, what are we asking for here?
Counsel, Chair, could you clarify, the recommendation from the staff was no, right?
Yeah, yeah, that is exactly where, Your Worship, the Development Officer, in consultation with the staff of the Planning Department, came forward with a recommendation of no.
Right.
Planning Board listened to the developer, listened to other members of the Planning Board, and their decision or their recommendation was to approve it. So that's where it stands now, it's in this room here, for this Council to decide. This is the decision-making room. So we have one rejection, one approval, and here we are, and it's up to Council now to cast their vote, one way or the other.
Yeah. Is that clear? Counsel Ramsey?
Yes, thank you very much, Counsel Duffy. Like, we had two boats in the water there, that's all, one there, you know, you have the Board saying one thing, maybe saying something else, or your staff saying something else. So I'm just, that's what I'm trying to wrap my head around.
Good to go?[1763.39]
Okay, questions called.
Question. Counsel Yankoff, yea or nay?
I'm not in favor.
Counsel Duffy?
No.
Counsel Duran?
No.
Counsel Twiele?
No.
Counsel Revered?
I'm opposed.
Counsel McLeod?
I'm opposed.
Counsel Ramsey?
No.
Deputy?
Opposed.
Counsel McCain?
I'm in favor.
Counsel Bernard?
I'm opposed.
Okay, I have eight-two, and Counselors McCain and?
Duran in favor.
Uh, Duran in favor. Okay? So eight-two, just one second. Counsel. Okay. And? Duran, opposed. Okay? Good.
Just stand by, your worship, please.
Someone's up there, or is it?
Uh, adult, uh, people are coming on, because there's also staff on there as well.
So the next one is?
Thank you, I know.
All right.
I know you have a chair.
Yes, your worship, moved by Counsel Duffy, signed by Counsel McCain, that the request to permit a massage therapy business as a home occupation used within the proposed single detached dwelling at 32 Tanary Court, Lot 15, PID 1123058, be rejected, your worship.
Okay, no question, any questions? No? Okay. Counsel Yankoff, yea or nay?
In favor.
Counsel Duffy, in favor. Counsel Duran?
Do you have a vote on this, your worship?
Yeah, Mr. Kelly, do you want to explain it?
Yeah, so, because it was turned down for the, the one that came from the planning board, we have to bring forth another motion to clearly reject.
Okay.
Yea or nay?
No.
Counsel Twiele?
In favor.
Counsel Revered?
In favor.
Counsel McLeod?
In favor.
Counsel McLeod? Am I mute?
He must have fell off, your worship.
In favor.
Is that McLeod, or that's Revered?
That was Revered.
Ah, lucky we can, we have voice detection here. Okay, so he's gone?
No, that was Terry.
Is that Counsel McLeod?
Yeah.
Yea or nay? Okay. Counsel Ramsey?
In favor.
Deputy?
In favor.
Counsel McCain?
No.
And Counsel Bernard?
In favor.
Eight-two, Counselors McCain and Duran, against, correct? You get the resolution there, sir?
Your worship, moved by Counsel Duffy, signed by Counsel McCain, that the request to Amanda Penix A, future land use map of the official plan from low-density residential to mobile home residential, and Amanda Penix G zoning map of the zoning development by law, from the low-density residential, single R2H zone, to the manufactured housing residential, MHR zone, for the northern portion of the property at Norwood Road, Friar Drive, PID 4160305, identified in Attachment A of the planning report, Plan 2021, February 6B-5. In order to develop 66 manufactured home residential lots, be approved subject to a covenant to be placed on the subject property that identifies that the entire land of the proposed development is within the airport N30 boundary, and subject to a higher level of noise caused by airport operations.
Okay. Any questions, concerns? Do you want to speak to it first, Counsel?
Yeah, just briefly, your worship, this, of course, was, this application was the subject matter of our last public meeting in Rod Worley, with great turnout from the residents in the area. It's a, it's a unique approach to housing, and it addresses it specifically to those young families or young people that don't really have enough financial resources for a down payment, or to pay a mortgage for a home, as we call a stick home, an ordinary R1 zone, home, but in this particular situation, the, the, there are modular homes that are being provided by, provider here in Cheryl Town, got through a company, and the 55, 59 to 66 lots, depending on how it works out, these lots are going to be available for sale. Normally, when people have a mobile home or a modular home, they, or a mobile home in any, in any case, they have to pay the rent on the, on the, the land itself. In this case here, a young couple or a young person can, can buy a home at a very reasonable price and purchase the lot on which the home will, will sit, and those, those people, at the end of their career, or later on in life, they'll have some equity in a home whereby, without this sort of setup, which is very beneficial to them, they would be just paying rent for, you know, be just going down the drain at the end of their working life, or later on in life, they wouldn't have anything to show for it, other than furniture in the house, or in the apartment. So therefore, the planning board has, has recommended, in this case, that this application be approved. Thank you, your worship.
Counsel McCain?
Thanks. I speak loud, so I don't think I have to stand up.
I think you should, just to put it, standing.
Okay, so, the Chair's correct, the application ahead of us tonight is to rezone this land to just MHR, and although I concur that these developments do provide variety of housing options, for many, whether it be young people starting out, or some people wanting downsides, or just people, I think there were many questions that were brought forward at the planning, public planning meeting, that I feel we still have to have some answers to before I'm confident. And I know we talk about rezoning, and this kind of being the next stage, but I feel if we could have answers to these questions, then, otherwise, once we proved a rezone, things just proceed, and we don't always get the answers to some of the questions that were brought up. There was probably seven points that stuck out with me, and I'm Alex, or Chair, if you can answer some of the questions, you know, with traffic, in the subdivision plan, one question that was good was, why is there no exit onto Norwood Road? Why is it that the exit has to come out into the community on Friar Drive? The other concern with traffic was the one entrance exit into this area, Oak Drive Extension and Norwood Road Roundabout, the bottleneck's there. There's no other access point to this area, and the road we know at the top of McCray and Norwood is not connected in the winter. We've just approved 62 duplexes at the top of McCray, and now we're looking at possibly 66 at the bottom of Norwood, so, you know, that's an area. And there's approximately 700 people that are currently accessing Norwood Road daily. The environment in the planner's report, he confirms that the current subdivision plan still does need work. He doesn't appear to, certain locks don't appear to allow for sufficient room for construction without buffer zone disturbance. We also had email correspondence from the Provincial Department of Environment, where they said the stream does have a 15-foot buffer zone, but it does not take into consideration the federal government easement, which also needs to be looked at, as potentially it could further extend this buffer zone. I think that really should be clarified, when we're talking about rezoning property. They also recommend that an environmental impact assessment be completed. And I know we talked about infrastructure not being the responsibility of the developer at all, but we just approved two apartment buildings on Sherwood Road, and I know that there was going to be an agreement for some cost sharing for infrastructure between the development, I don't know if that's something that we can go back and talk to the developer about as we proceed, or it's something that we certainly can look at as we're moving forward with continued subdivision development, but although it isn't the responsibility, the Chair is correct, I concur with that. The parking lot frontage for these lots, these lots are smaller than what would be required for the currently R2 zone property. The developer talked about having his, these mini homes, or the modular homes set up, similar to what we see in Francois-Biaud Park, over in Kitty and Drive area, but there's parking along the streets in that area, so there's space for cars to park along the streets, I believe, when I drove out there. There's not going to be room for street parking in this new subdivision, and I believe the public works did have concern around parking and, and the way it was set up for cars. So I guess I'm well aware today, we're deciding on whether or not we're going to rezone this parcel of land to MHR, but I do believe that this decision affects all these other questions, you know, maybe for these reasons, I'd like to see either these questions be answered, Alex, or a deferral on this application until some of these questions quit the answers. Thank you.
So are you asking for a deferral, Counselor?
Unless he can answer those points.
Mr. Chair, do you want him to answer those points?
All I want to say is that, like, a lot of these points that are made, they're valid points, and they have to be addressed, but this is a planning issue that we're talking about tonight, and we were listening to about, supposedly, at the public meeting. Like, this is planning, this is a rezoning, this is the start, the starting block, to get this, put the wheels on this project, it's going to hopefully help a lot of people. Those, they're valid points, parking and buffer zones and all that, but that's for other, for another time, or for another time, and for other facets of City Hall, be it water and sewer, or be it outside of City Hall too, environment protection and that sort of thing with the provincial government, those are all things that the permit will, when he, when a potential owner applies for a permit, you know, those are bases that will have to be touched, but to hold it up and defer it, I mean, I don't agree with that, I mean, we can work with those things, they've been newly noted, they'll be in the minutes here tonight, maybe development agreement is in place, or should be in place, I don't know, I leave that to our, our manager here, and I'd like Mr. Forbes to speak, if you would.
Okay, Mr. Forbes?
I do have a question.
Could we just get Mr. Forbes' opinion first, please, and then we'll ask for questions? I think Counsel McCain wants to, go ahead, Alan.
So, your worship, compared to Counsel McCain's questions, concerns, traffic was looked at, Mr. Adams looked at that, he felt feels that the, you know, the adjacent road network can accommodate the traffic on that local street. The issue of parking, the applicant, I'm pretty confident had indicated that they, at the public meeting, but again, I'm relying on my memory, but the applicant had indicated that they did intend to provide two parking spaces onsite, they would be, they would go a little bit deeper into each lot to provide the parking. The environmental impact assessment, I mean, since I've been here, the province hasn't required an environmental impact assessment on anything, that doesn't mean that there aren't things that may trigger that, but typically, this isn't one of them, but we would defer to them, if they wanted to do an environmental impact assessment, they have the power to request it. The other issue with the buffer zones, I mean, those are provincial requirements, they, there's no way that you can, it overrides the zoning, so you cannot, the zoning wouldn't change that, if they intruded into that buffer area, they would have the problem showing up, and they would have an issue there, and I'm trying to think if that I, did I cover most of them?
Probably not, yeah. I guess for me, too, is that silo is working, and I appreciate, again, Chair, what you're saying, is this is just an MHR rezone tonight, but I feel that it impacts all the rest of this stuff, and if we did better by having answers to some of those things, maybe there wouldn't be so many questions, and, you know, these residents deserve answers to these questions, they've lived here for many years, they've invested in their area, and now we're going to have some change, for the first time in a long time, they do understand development does happen, and it's going to occur, but it would be nice if we could be providing answers to their questions.
Okay, who else asked for a question? Did you respond, Counselor? Mr. Chair? I'm sorry, do you want to respond?
The public question, the majority staying from the public meeting was that these lots are going to be for sale, and the city, the city would own the street, is that correct?
Is that correct, Mr. Chair?
Yes, correct.
That's correct?
So the street would have to be put into the city standards?
Correct.
So the streets here would be the width of our standard streets? So what you would have seen in River Ridge, Counsel McCain, it should be the same, the width of the street should be the same, as far as, you know, when you buy a lot, certainly every summer you have a drive-by, but as far as any parking on the street, I think it would be the same as any other street, because they have their standard, the city standards that have beneath.
Okay, is, is that correct, Mr. Forbes?
Well, it's, the key thing is, you're only required to have one parking spot for, for your, for a lot, for a single detached dwelling, so the, the concern is, which it can happen, that when people show up, where are they going to park? But, but again, I mean, I'm relying on the applicant here, but the applicant indicated that in order to address that, he would make two, two parking spaces, if you're parking on the street, it's the same as anywhere, you would have to be able to, if it's properly, if not, not delineated, then you can't park there, you can park there, but, but again, in the wintertime, it's not ideal that you'd be parking on the street, so, the key thing is, is that we, you know, that they should have the required parking from the get-go, and the one space is all over parked.
Counsel McCain, do you?
My, my, my point is, though, I'm glad to believe that we're not sure the width of the street, all I'm saying is, if the city street is required to be the city to, to meet the city standards, then it will be on city standards, the width of the street should be the same as on the, on the city streets.
Yeah, and that's 66 feet wide, correct, Mr. Forbes?
It could be 60, 66, I would defer to Mr. Adams on this.
Oh, okay. Counsel McCain, and then Counsel Ramsey, did you just?
I just wanted a quick follow-up to that, and would that be able to be a development agreement or something, where there's at least two spots per, per, per home, if this was to go through? Could that be something that we could put into the development agreement?
Unfortunately, you're, in that case, then you're exceeding your bylaw requirement, so I know, again, I, I would be cautious about that, because you're, if, if the bylaw is incorrect, we should change the bylaw.
I think that, this still is my point, there's still a lot of unknowns that are still not answered.
Counsel Ramsey?
Thank you, your worship, thank you, Counsel Duffy. I will be supporting this, because I think, as you echoed some of the thoughts too, it's great for starters, or it's great for people that are getting, like, earache, amite, that everyone wants downsides and all that, and the really thing that impressed me a lot was the land purchase goal, the house. I have family members that live in River Ridge, and they're very pleased with it, it's very well-kept and all that stuff, but at the same time, on top of their mortgages, they are paying a rental fee, so this is sort of enticing other people to come in there, so I will be supporting this, I think it's a good project, thank you very much.
Who else called in?
I have a question.
Yeah, Counsel Revered?
Please, thank you for that, for your report. I do also like the project, I think it's, I think it's a good project, and one that's very needed for the city. Like, I guess my question, one is, the fire police are very, are okay with the, the one exit pass?
Counsel, you're going to yield, yield to Mr. Forbes?
Right, yeah, this is my application, but again, as part of any application of this nature, the planner works with Mr. Adams and the, and the police department.
And fire.
I'm assuming, I definitely know Mr. Adams, I've been aware of this, there have been a number of questions asked of Mr. Adams, but I'm assuming that the police authorities also been involved in this as well.
Okay, second question?
So, just, just a follow-up, just assuming, so, do you have, do you have confirmation that, that the police and fire are okay with, because like I said, that's fairly large subdivision, when you add this piece on, and my fear is that if you only have one egg that kind of goes through, and you have a call attack at the end, it may be concerning for firefighters to get in there, so, again, if they're okay, it's pretty, I'm just asking a question.
Counsel Duffy, do you wish to yield to Mr. Forbes?
Yes.
Mr. Forbes?
I think that if it's, if it's appropriate, your worship, I will bring in Mr. Adams, and Mr. Adams can bring in.
Is he in the house?
He is in, he is in the house.
Okay.
Two seconds.
Yeah, just let's bring in Mr. Adams. That's God.
And while we're waiting for Mr. Adams, your worship?
Yes, just want a question to?
When we talk about, when we talk about development agreement, it usually ties in with the resolution, so if there are, if there are things that council do want as part of the actual resolution, in the form of the development agreement, tonight, tonight would be the time that we do, so if, if council wasn't satisfied, and with, and there's questions still to be answered, you know, defer a little bit, to defer this development agreement, but once, once we pass the zoning, with all the rest of the development agreement, a little bit like?
Just, just, just one second, Mr. Adams is in the chamber. Mr. Adams?
Good day.
Do you want to get, what's the question, Alan? Alec, is it a fire, or the paper dropping on the floor there?
I think the question was, that the, was the engineering department, Mr. Adams is going to speak for himself, and not for the police department, but, well, were, was he comfortable with the configuration for access and the road network and traffic, as it pertains to this subdivision, and I'll let you speak to it.
He's the chief engineer.
The one, at this point, is what my question was, versus the, what was proposed, the package, is two.
Mr. Adams?
Yeah, so, so for the configuration of how they have the new one onto Friar, and then comes back out onto, I guess it does, just loops around on Friar, that's pretty standard, two, so that would be two access points.
Mr. Adams, can you speak up a little louder?
Certainly. So, so how the new development is proposing, connecting to the existing name of Friar, and then connecting right around is pretty standard, so it does, that new section is, does have two connection points, so for that, it was, was no, there was no concern for that. The traffic, fairly negligible, considering, you know, we're only adding additional, a few additional lots compared to what was previously proposed, or what is currently approved in the bylaw, and it is a very small residential area, so traffic was And it is a very small residential area, so traffic was not a concern as well. The parking does always bring some concern. We are smaller frontages now compared to a typical frontage, so it means fewer vehicles and parking in front of a home. And again, we don't know how many vehicles these homes are going to have, so there could be concerns of additional parking on the street. And when you have smaller frontage, that can mean if you have two extra vehicles, for whatever reason, you could be parking only in front of yours and your neighbors, so sit up both your vehicles prior to your home. So that was a concern. So that's our primary concern, was the parking issue.
Okay. Is that all right, Counsel McCabe? Do you have another question?
I'll go back to, can we have some sort of a development agreement in this case then, where we have, at least can be ensured? Because I know from other city, other planning streets where parking, if they meet the requirement, it causes an awful lot of chaos. If you look at Alina Court and these other streets, where one park, we know people don't have one car right now outside the city. So it's, it's a huge concern, for sure.
So we could add a development agreement without deferment? We've done it before, why is this complicated? She's asking for a friendly amendment. Are you asking for a friendly amendment?
Absolutely.
I thought you were asking for deferment.
I would love it, on the other stuff, but I'm, I'm pretty confident that the questions have been answered, that as long as, I know that the province is going to want to look at the environmental beast.
Yeah.
That'll come. But the parking is, is an issue.
So friendly amendment added to the resolution for a development agreement? Right.
That's fine.
Can you, can you screen that in there, Mr. Kelly? How do you want to insert it? Do you want the resolution back? Should I take it back there?
Have we got an answer to the green space? The question, we weren't sure if they felt they?
That goes back to Parks and Recreation. So Alex is just going to look at finesse in the, adding the friendly amendment to the resolution.
What does it say, Dave?
Is that all right, Mr. Chair?
Oh, that's fine.
Is it?
I just didn't want it sitting for three or four months in advance. I'm sure these things would, would be taken care of as a matter of course.
Yeah, five great George Street? Is that what you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about?
Dealing with it for a year?
Oh, yeah. That's, yeah.
Yeah, we're going to deal with it sooner than later.
Yeah.
I think the questions get answered, and they should be, if they're easy answers, then it's not a long time. If they're not easy answers, then it's good to get the answers before we?
Due diligence.
We don't, absolutely.
So what's the insert, Mike?
A development agreement, and?
I know this is not the purpose.
No, it's good, it's good for the debate.
Your Worship?
Yes, sir.
I, well, Mr. Adams was in speaking. I did talk to the applicant who was present this evening, and it was their intention to provide two parking spaces. So I think that that was your friendly amendment, that you would like to see two parking spaces there, based upon what they're condemned to me, and that you should be able to be?
They had mentioned a lot of the last?
Yeah. So that's, that would be acceptable. And, and, because then you have to go do the other part.
Mr. Kelly, as CAO is going to reread the amended friendly amendment to the resolution.
Yes, Worship. It will read that the request to amend Appendix A, future land use map of the official plan from low-density residential to mobile home residential, and amending Appendix G, zoning map of the zoning development bylaw, from the low-density residential single zone to the manufactured housing residential zone, for the northern portion of, sorry, at Norwood Road Friar Drive, PID 416305, identified in Attachment A of the Planning and Development Report, Plan 2021, 1, February 6B-5. In order to develop 66 manufactured home residential lots, be approved, subject to a development agreement, and subject to a covenant be placed on the subject property that identifies the entire lands of the proposed development, is within the airport and 30 boundary, and subject to a higher level of noise caused by airport operations.
Okay. That good? Question?
Question called.
Questions called.
I didn't hear the, the parking part.
No, subject to a development agreement.
Okay.
That would be part of the. Question called?
Yes, it is, sir.
Counsel Ramsey, question called? Okay.
Yes, it is, sir.
Counsel Yankoff?
In favor.
Counsel Duffy?
In favor.
Counsel Drun?
In favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Counsel Verde?
In favor.
Counsel McLeod?
In favor.
Counsel Ramsey?
In favor.
Deputy? Counsel McCabe? Yea or nay?
No.
Oh, okay. Counsel Bernard?
In favor.
Okay, 9-1, and Counselor McCabe opposed.
Okay, sir, you're not?
Moved by Counsel Duffy, and second by Counsel McCabe, that the request to consolidate Lot 17-2 and Lot 17-3 at 6 Prince Street, PID 739128, in order to construct an outdoor amenity space consisting of seating, fire pits, bandstand, patio, and boardwalk extensions for the founders' food hall and market, be approved, subject to the PIN survey plan and a renewed per owner deed description being registered describing the utter boundaries of the consolidated property.
Your Worship? Okay, sir. Counsel Yankoff?
I just wanted to point out that at the last, the last planning meeting, Mr. Cochran was in and explained what his plan was for down there, and answered our question. So if anyone had read the pamphlets, if they would have seen that it certainly will be a nice improvement and a great way to attract some people down in that area. So I will be supporting this. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, Counsel Twill, more for?
Counsel Duffy, thank you for your report. The proposed development or the improvements to these amenities, is this the north of the building or the south of the building? That's my first question.
The north.
Okay, it's the north. So what is the impact and effect on the city's owned green space?
You mean where the rink is or was two days ago? Yeah.
That's correct. How close is this, this proposed development to the, to the green space where the rink is, and then of course, in the spring of the year, right through to the fall, where residents get a chance to enjoy that green space?
Yeah. I think it abuts it, Mr. Forbes, it abuts the, the city-owned land, the proposed area for this, this project.
So, is it right up next to the boundary line?
Yeah, I believe so, yes. But now, the boardwalk will separate that. There's a boardwalk, right?
No, it's not a boardwalk. I'm talking about?
No, 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 no.
I'm talking about the, the green space that the city owns, a purchase for the enjoyment of the community, and, and what, what, I guess the Port Authority is proposing on behalf of the founders' home. So they're looking at adding these amenities. So the question is, for example, was this better to Parks and Recreation? That's my first question.
Well, this, this is their land, Counsel Twill. It's two, it's two separate lots owned by the Port Authority, and they're just making one lot out of the two lots. So it's?
Okay, but they're, they're having these developments where it will, you know, in terms of, you know, adding these, adding these amenities, just wondering what the impact and effect will be on the residents. Where, for example, if you're going to have, you know, entertainment and the sound it's going to carry, where do residents, for example, on Water Street, were they consulted? Was there any type of collaboration process?
No, we had the developer in, and he explained that to us, that it was going to be a very non-invasive sort of music. It was kind of background elevator music, and it was going to be over by eight o'clock in the evening. It was, it's a community hub, is the developer, proposed community hub for folks, just to come and relax, and fire pits, and no, so they didn't carry out any, any consultation with the border, the surrounding neighborhoods.
Okay, just trying to, just understand, I'm trying to understand what the impact would be, if, if there is an impact.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, as far as the residents, because, you know, we often hear from residents on Water Street that get very, very annoyed?
Yeah.
With any type of development takes place down in the Water Front, B, where they consulted, C, you know, what is the impact on them, and what, what type of entertainment? Is it passive, is it, you know, much more?
I think Counsel Yankoff covered that off for us as the counselor for the area. Maybe he, she would like to add something? Yeah.
I would. I thank you, Counsel Twill, as well. I also confirmed that the three trees that are down there, they're, they're not going to take those three trees down either. So, you know, the, that was one of the concerns I heard from some of the residents, so it was nice to hear that that was confirmed as well. And, and the noise factor wasn't going to, they were going to be very complimentary to the other passive entertainment that happens down?
Peaks.
In front of peaks.
Okay.
You're all right? Good, there, Counsel Twill?
Yeah, that's fine.
Any other questions?
Question's called.
Question's called? Okay. Counsel Yankoff?
In favor.
Counsel Duffy?
In favor.
Counsel Drun?
In favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Counsel Verde?
In favor.
Counsel McLeod?
In favor.
Counsel Ramsey?
In favor.
Deputy? Counsel McCabe?
In favor.
And Counsel Bernard?
In favor.
Okay, 10-0.
Your Worship, moved by Counsel Duffy, second by Counsel McCabe, that proposed amendments to the zoning and development bylaw PHZD dot 2 pertaining to the sections as attached be approved to proceed to public consultation. It's the Planning Number 7 Zoning and Development bylaw PHZD dot 2, proposed amendments. One, Section 3.3 Development and Building Permits expire re, of incomplete buildings and development permit applications after six months of inactivity. Two, Section 3.9.1 Major Variants Clarifying Regulations Subject to the Variance Process. Three, Section 4.19 Amenity Space for Apartment Buildings, Define Requirements for Both Indoor and Not Door Amenity Spaces. Four, Section 6.2 Undersized Lot, Clarify Minimum Development Rights by Allowing for a Single Detached Dwelling. Five, Section 6.7 Garbage Area Requirements, Standardized Site Requirements for Garbage Storage Areas on Multi-Residential Developments. Six, Section 45 General Provisions for Signage Insertion of Additional Facia Signage Requirements for Buildings Over Four Stories in Height in the 500 Lot Area. And seven, Appendix A Definitions Delete Amenity Area and Its Definition and Replace It With Amenity Space and Its Definition.
Yeah, let's just go to public consultation. Yeah. Question?
Question called.
Okay. Counsel Yankoff?
In favor.
Counsel Duffy?
In favor.
Counsel Drun?
In favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Counsel Verde?
In favor.
Counsel McLeod?
In favor.
Counsel Ramsey?
In favor.
Deputy? Counsel McCabe?
In favor.
Counsel Bernard?
In favor.
Okay, 10-0.
Your Worship, moved by Counsel Duffy, second by Counsel McCabe, that the proposed amendments to the zoning and development bylaw PHZD dot 2 pertaining to sections as attached be approved to proceed to public consultation. And it is Section 21.1.1 Medium Density Mixed Use Residential Emir zone to clarify the permitted uses within the zone as townhouse dwellings, semi-detached or duplex dwellings, single-detached dwellings, nursing home, and community care facilities. And two, Section 17 Medium Density Residential Townhouse R3T Zone to remove and repeal apartment dwellings as a permitted use in the zone.
Okay, again, go into a public consultation, correct?
Yes, Worship.
Okay.
Questions called.
Questions called. Counsel Yankoff?
In favor.
Counsel Duffy?
In favor.
Counsel Drun?
In favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Counsel Verde?
In favor.
Counsel McLeod?
In favor.
Counsel Ramsey?
In favor.
Deputy? Counsel McCabe? Counsel Bernard?
In favor.
10-0.
Carried. Your Worship, moved by Counsel Duffy, second by Counsel McCabe, that the request to amend Schedule A, Future Land Use Map of the Official Plan, to remove the designation, concept, planning area, and replace all properties designated as subs with a comprehensive planning area, be approved to proceed to public consultation.
Another public consultation?
Yes, Worship.
Questions called.
Questions called. Okay, Counsel Yankoff? Counsel Duffy?
In favor.
Counsel Drun?
In favor.
Counsel Twill?
In favor.
Counsel Verde?
In favor.
Counsel McLeod?
In favor.
Counsel Ramsey?
In favor.
Deputy? Counsel McCabe? And Counsel Bernard? 10-0, carried. Okay.
Your Worship, this is first reading, Official Plan PHOPA dot 1, to adopt the Official Plan Amendment PHOPA dot 1 dash 020, the land use for a portion of the property of, at Norwood Road Friar Drive, PID 416305, as shown on Appendix A, Future Land Use Map of the City of Shell Town, Official Plan is designated as Mobile Home Residential, hereby excluding it from its former designation of Low Density Residential. Moved by Counsel Duffy, second by Counsel Yankoff, be it resolved that the Official Plan Amendment PHOPA dot 1 dash 020, as pertains to a portion of the property at Norwood Road Friar Drive, PID 416305, as attached, be adopted.
Shell, pass. Wait now, information?
If you just put on subject to the signing of a development agreement?
Yes, thank you. Yes, and that would be after?
The end of your worship.
You know where to put it, sir? Want to reread it? Or is that, are we all ready to go with that? Is that all right? That's all right, yeah.
Just after approved?
You left me a glass of water. Well, that's reading going. That's all right, sir. Shell, pass?
Pass.
Pass.
Pass, okay. I have to quickly go over it. Counsel Yankoff, yea?
Yea.
Yea.
Council Duffy?
Yes.
Council Dron?
Yes.
Council Twill?
In favor.
Council Reverde?
In favor.
Council McLeod?
In favor.
Council Ramsey?
In favor.
Deppi? Council McCabe? Nay. And Council Bernard?
Yes.
Nine one. You want to put that down, Mr.? Okay, do we have to read it again, Hesu?
It's part two of that, your worship. Zoning and Development bylaw PH dash ZD dot two, subject to development agreement. Adopt bylaw PHZD dot two oh four three, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to rezone a portion of the property at Norwood Road and Friar Drive PID four one six three oh five from low density residential R two S zone to the manufactured housing residential NHR zone. Move by Council Duffy, second by Council McCabe, be resolved that the bylaw to amend the city of Shell Town zoning and development bylaw PHZD dot two oh four three as pertains to a portion of the property at Norwood Road and Friar Drive PID four one six three oh five as attached be read a first time and approved subject to a public, sorry, to a signed development agreement and be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, your worship.
Okay. Shall it carry?
Pass.
Okay, quickly again, I guess I have to do this again. Okay, Council Yankov?
Pass.
Council Duffy?
Yes.
Council Dron?
Yes.
Council Twill?
In favor.
Council Reverde?
Pass.
Council McLeod?
Pass.
Council Ramsey?
Yes.
Deppi? Council McCabe? No. Council Bernard?
Yes.
Okay, nine one. Okay, nine one, carried. Okay. There you are, sir. Signs sealed, deliver. I think that's it, is it, sir? That's it. Council Duffy, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we're on to strategic priorities and intergovernmental cooperation. Council Kevin Ramsey?
Thank you, your worship. That's a long one, the planning. We met on January twenty-eighth and the minister in your package. The formal housing advisory committee did not meet since our last meeting began. Youth engagement advisory committee did not meet. There are no resolutions and there's one reading, uh, it's the first reading to amend the procedure by law.
Right.
Any questions, I will certainly try and answer them. Thank you very much.
Council Ramsey?
Yes.
We just discussed moving these two advisory committees to CAC, correct? Do you get them reinstated? Affordable and accessible housing and?
Yes.
Okay, just wanted to note that for the
Yes, your worship.
And that's going to be brought up under CAC?
Yes, uh, kind of like, your worship, what it was is that these two groups have not met since, it's going to be close to a year. And what it is, is we talked about it with our committee and there's some people don't want to come back on the committees, so we're going to look at it and see if we got an interest out there for both groups and if there's not, we'll, or we're going to set a timeframe, it might be every, every quarterly and come back with a report for us. But in order just to say we got a use retention or formal housing thing and there's nothing being done, like we don't see much use in it, so this is what we're doing, we're going to meet with them, if we get enough applications in, we're going to move forward. If not, we're going to take the city.
And that goes through this council advisory committee?
Yes, it does, your worship.
That's important, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Council McCabe, do you have a question?
I do, thank you and thank you, Council Ramsey, again, I asked last month and I'm just wondering if we have finalized a date for our strategic planning session that we're going to have before we finish it.
Thank you, Council McCabe. The CAO and I and the mayor, we've been looking at this, it's not going to be something that you can run in an hour or two hours, three hours. And we're hoping to get all the council on board for it because, you know, if we're going to meet and see what's in the long-term plans, we want everybody's input with it. And if we're not going to get an input with it, but it's a, Peter, we're still working on dates, am I?
So, we, if I could?
Right ahead there. Deal to the CAO, we'll deal to the CAO.
So with the chair's permission, we are in the process of preparing a citizen satisfaction survey and once that is complete, that will go to council and in honor to the strategic planning process because that will feed into that. So we are working on that piece first and so we hope to have that done shortly. We're just negotiating a few points and we'll let you know.
Council McCabe, do you want clarification?
I just kind of a timeline of when we might expect this would happen, like we're going into our third term now, so by the time we develop a plan for strategic priorities, some of us might not be back.
So we hope to be able to go into the strategic planning in March sometime, subject to council availability and the budgetary process, as you know, that takes a lot of council time, so it's around that timeframe.
March.
Or late, or in the early, depending upon
Yeah, we're looking at March earlier.
Yeah, twenty twenty one.
Because we're trying to get the, like the CAO said, like who, I was reading reports last week that he gave me to, like from other cities and there's a survey, and we'd like to hear from everybody.
Oh, wow.
And so we're trying to get all those, all those lines replaced here and, you know, we're going to move on from there. So I assume as we can, but we're going to jump off the board here. Actually, Council McCabe?
No resolutions?
Yeah, there is.
I just wanted to read.
Okay, is that about the meeting?
This is to amend the city of Shell Town procedure bylaw to revise subsection eleven point five to be consistent with section one twenty-one four of the municipal government act of PDI and include a fixed day each month of, for special council, meetings of council. It is be resolved that the bylaw to amend the city of Shell Town procedure bylaw be read a first time, moved by Council Ramsey and second by Council Reverde. And there is the wording, your worship, it's not fixed firmly, but it is to an allocation of time if you wish to review that.
Yeah, and that's part of the package, all the council's received, okay? So first reading allows for discussion, correct?
Yes, your worship.
Council Ramsey, did you want to speak to it first?
Just shortly, your worship, yes. We had a lot of requests from a lot of councillors, as we all know, the last two and a half years, we've been going meetings upon meetings and there's nothing wrong with that, that's our job, but like instead of having special meetings all the time of council, we're looking at the fourth Monday of every month and this is part of it and then, like there could be an emergency meeting pop up anytime, so that's, nothing we can do with that, but we're looking at secondary date and then if there's something going up and if there's nothing happening that month, I mean, we know, but we want a permanent date in there and that'd be the fourth Monday of the month. So that's what this is about, your worship.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So is that clear, council, you're all? Now it doesn't preclude us from having other special meetings because of business that may arise between the regular monthly meeting and the regular scheduled special meeting on, is it the first Monday, last Monday?
So it is earmarked to be there, your worship, if required, but there's also, if you want to read off the wording that's there on the, on the bottom of that page.
Okay, council shall, okay, section five, subsection five point two, council shall set a fixed date each month when a special meeting of council may be held. Doesn't obligate us to hold it, may.
If there's something on your agenda.
Right.
Correct.
Right, but if there's something that comes up before that and we have to deal with it, we should be given the opportunity to deal with it anyways. That's my point of view. Council McCabe?
You're going to hear mine?
Yes, I know.
I think a lot of
You understand, I'm not, I just want to hear you.
I, no, I know, I, I do, I agree, but I think we have to be careful what we deem as emergency, it would be really nice if some of it could be stockpiled, come in on that fourth Monday so you knew that that was the night you were going to try to deal, unless there was like a major something, but it has been a lot of special meetings where if we knew that this was your time to just collect all your stuff and come in and deal with it at one time, it certainly would be
But you know what, this council has been dealing with a lot of issues and you know what, look at the planning and development this, this past year, over a hundred and eighty million dollars in
Permit fee.
Dollar value bill construction? That's the highest ever, we're dealing with ice pads, we're dealing with lots of issues, so I know it's a lot of work, but
If I may, your worship
Well, we'll deal to, Council Ramsey?
And Council McCabe, you're exactly right, and this is what we all discussed and things like that, and we're going to try and fit everything into that one meeting. I mean, like I said, saying, you know, there's something going on, so I think there's a time limit to, Mr. Kelly?
Three hours.
Of, of the have applications come in or, I'm not application, but ideas come in and all that stuff for, like for that meeting, is it forty-eight hours or twenty-four hours before?
So for a special meeting, it'd be called at, as per the MJ, within twenty-four hours at the request of the mayor, but we are trying to strategize more when it can be, but it does not prevent it from calling outside of that
Oh, no.
Fourth Monday.
Just want to have that option.
Your worship?
Council Reverde? Council Reverde, comment or question?
Yes. Yeah, no, just a comment, so again, we talked about this meeting, we, the expectation, I guess, from the public that, you know, in the past, that it's been once a month for a special public or a public, a special, or sorry, a regular meeting of council, the special meetings happened, you know, it didn't happen a ton. I find that this new council happens quite often and there's no reason why we have a two-week gap in between, that unless there's something that absolutely is an emergency that has to be settled, that we can't have a special council made two weeks from a regular council meeting, it's only a two-week gap.
Yeah. Well, point well
It's a lot, people doing things that they kind of expect that, they don't expect to have the answer, I'd say.
No, no. Okay. And shh, shall it pass?
Pass.
Okay, quick, shall it pass?
Pass.
Okay, Council Bernard, Council Dron, Council Twill, Council Reverde, Council McLeod? Yea, nay?
In favor, in a stockpile.
Yeah, ten zero.
Moved by Council Ramsey, second by Council Reverde, be resolved that the bylaw be now approved as a city bylaw and that it be entitled the city of Shell Town procedure bylaw and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, your worship.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Ten zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so our next report is finance and audit?
Thank you, your worship.
Do you, oh, I can wait to resolution.
You can exercise, isn't it? Thank you, your worship, our committee met four times since our last regular meeting of council, so I'd like to thank the committee for their time and commitment as we work through some of the budget details and process, we've been very, very busy as you can see. There is one resolution for council to consider tonight, your worship, and if there's any questions, I will do my best answer.
Let's open her up. Any questions?
Yes, I have a question.
Council Twill?
Deputy Mayor Cody, thank you for your report. As you know, last month I raised the, the suggestion of the city of Shell Town exploring with the provincial government the idea of freezing the property assessments and having those discussions with the government to give both the commercial, commercial business and residential, give them an opportunity, that predictability when it comes to increases in property assessments and having that frozen for a five-year period. I mean, we're, we're experiencing difficult times and we're going to experience more difficult times in the, in the months ahead and it's been hard on businesses, it's been hard on residents, it's been hard on everyone, regardless whether you're in the public sector or private sector, so I'm not sure if your committee had an opportunity to at least look into the, look into the issue, but I just wanted to bring it up again, to receive some positive feedback from the community and I think it would be a great step forward to, to explore that and maybe come to a working agreement with the provincial government and to give the people in our city, give them a break when it comes to increases in property assessments. It's true that our tax rate is, does not, has not been increased, but that doesn't preclude the property assessments from going up, so taxes do go up and I just wanted to reinforce that, thank you.
Council, Deputy Mayor Cody? We're responsible, so you want to take it back to committee?
Yeah, we can take it back to committee, you raised that last month and we're not quite there yet, but like I say, it's duly noted.
Okay. Do you want to go to the resolution?
Worship, move by Deputy Mayor Cody, second by
Mr. Kelly, just before, Council McCabe is in. Can you state, Council McCabe, can you state your conflict? Do we know the conflict? I think that's what I was asked before, that we should know, is it conflict because, Mr. Kelly, do we know?
It was declared before, before, before your worship and previously, and again, it's perceived conflict and the council is, a vague case.
And it's in the minutes, right?
Yes, your worship.
Okay, that's all I want to make sure, because I was asked by some councillors if they should declare it. Okay, go ahead.
Worship, move by Deputy Mayor Cody, second by Council Ramsey, that council approved the purchase of two four one, two four five Mount Edward Road in the amount of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand five hundred plus applicable fees and that council authorized the city to sign a two-year lease agreement with a tenant of two four five Mount Edward Road at nil month expiring, sorry, at nil dollars per month expiring January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three or earlier, subject to the thirty-day notice of the termination and she is the current owner of these properties, your worship, and that council authorized the city sign a two-year lease agreement with a tenant at two four one Mount Edward Road at nine hundred dollars a month expiring January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three or earlier, subject to a thirty-day notice of termination and further that the council authorized the increase in the twenty twenty twenty-one capital budget of five hundred and fifty thousand to fund this purchase, your worship.
So it's a capital
Your worship?
Yeah, no, I know, I know, it's a capital item.
Yes, your worship.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Twill?
Thank you. When this issue was brought forward a number of weeks ago, a number of months ago, the residents in the community are being affected by this proposed infrastructure that's going to be constructed, not sure on who's dying, but nonetheless, a number of questions that committed regarding the development of Sherwood Crossing and, and infrastructure that's going to be constructed in the future and due to those constructions, I believe there was an expectation given to the community that before anything would happen, a public meeting would be held and it would be held to look at traffic patterns, look at the traffic in terms of present and future and have the, the engineer consults, makes presentation to the community. There's a, there's a lot of anxiety and there's a lot of fear in the community, whether you live on Ash Drive, Mount Edward Road, or in the McQuaid development, and I think before we agreed to a purchase of this magnitude, it would be only considered and advantageous for us to go out and have a public meeting with the community to give them the opportunity, ask the questions, make suggestions and make recommendations. This is the expectation that was given to the community and quite frankly, your worship, very surprised this resolution is before council tonight without going to the candy first.
Is that it there, Council Twill?
That's my first call, yeah?
Oh, your first call, okay. Mr. Kelly, did you just want to do a quick review of that purchase?
So, your worship, as you recall
Can I just take a little out of your
Sorry, if you recall, your worship, council did give staff direction to proceed to a purchase and sale agreement and we have come up with that as complete, it is now here for gratification, this, these funds are supposed to be transferred tomorrow and so it's here for council's final sign-off as per council's directive, your worship. So this is the final stage, after council already said, go ahead and proceed to purchase these properties.
Do you recall the vote on that, sir?
There wasn't a vote, your worship, because it was held in camera.
Oh, no, there was consensus, correct, okay.
And under section
You weren't there, your worship.
Under, under section one nineteen-two, it does allow to give direction, your worship.
Yeah, so the meeting was chaired by the deputy, so there was consensus, correct? Okay. Uh, any other questions? Council Yankov?
Thank you. Just wondering, will it be, the rent is at nine hundred dollars plus HST and will we be, will the city be paying for the utilities or will that be a tenant?
That is the responsibility of the tenant.
Okay. So should that be in this little?
We can make sure that is the case, but that is the, that they'll pay, these are, the current owner is in one and that's part of the transaction for that to happen for, for two years, the other is already a current tenant who is paying that much per, per month, but they do pay their own utilities.
And who pays for the stone removal of the driveway?
That would be
And the grass cutting?
That is still, if they're the lease, they would maintain as they have been maintaining, but we will further clarify those points.
Okay, and the driveway gets damaged, who fixes the driveway?
We, as the owner, we would be responsible.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Kelly, is HST on, on rent? Do you have HST? I'm just trying to confirm that.
Again, worship, I don't have an answer.
We'll find that, but that could be in the notes, but it's a good
There is HST, as long as you're a business that makes over thirty thousand dollars a year, yes, there is HST.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a question there, your worship.
Yeah, go right ahead, Council Dron?
Uh, thank you, I, I can't support this resolution and, you know, especially a, a two-year free rent involved in that, I know that must have been some of the, the in-depth negotiations, but I certainly can't approve that, but the question I have is, again, it says here, council authorized the increase in the twenty twenty-one capital budget for five hundred and sixty thousand, but I've got a, I've got a record of how many times have we increased this budget and by how much, you know, we passed it and then all of a sudden we buy things and, and the budget keeps going up and up and up and, you know, it's, it's certainly a concern of mine and, you know, I feel for the people in my ward that, you know, they're scared of this and what's going to happen, we buy this and is the road going to connect to Ash Drive, you know, the residents are very concerned, so I, I certainly can't support this resolution, but I would, I would like to know the budget question for the court, thank you.
Mr. Kelly, is, is Merk here?
Yes, no, he's, he's online, your worship.
Could Merrick just, I think I asked that question at last finance committee, what did, of a $26 million capital budget for 2020, 2021, what have we spent so far?
We'll get that report for you, worship.
But I think he wants it now.
We don't have it right now, worship.
But I think it was answered at the, at our last finance committee.
But with these other things being added on, worship, with the question just being asked about how many other things we add on to it, we have to go back and make sure we account for all those, worship.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
Your worship.
You have one more second question, sir? Go ahead, Counselor Twill.
I'd like to move a deferral.
Okay.
In the event that we go to, go to a public meeting to give the residents an opportunity to look at what's, what this expenditure, what's the purpose of this expenditure, and to give the residents an opportunity to look at the traffic studies, have a presentation by the, by the traffic engineers, and for the residents, whether you live on Ash Drive, Mount Edward Road, or the McQuaid Development, to give the residents an opportunity to see what is being proposed for the future in terms of infrastructure, who's going to pay for the infrastructure, and what the expectations are. Again, I reiterate, when I first spoke earlier, the residents were assured there was going to be a public meeting, and we have a responsibility and an obligation to go to the people first before we even entertain an expenditure of this magnitude, so I'll move that resolution.
Okay, a deferral, so just before we move that.
Move that motion.
So you're the mover? You're the mover? I'll second it.
I'm the mover. I'll talk.
Okay, so just on the deferral, Counselor Duffy, are we not planning to have a public consultation on the master traffic plan?
Yes.
That will be.
Master traffic plan, yes.
Yeah, for that, not just for that area, the whole area?
Yes.
Yeah, so that would be the public meeting?
The whole city.
Yeah, so that's the deferring topic.
That's the deferral I'm referring to, your worship.
Okay, good, okay, so the deferral's on the floor.
I'll comment, your worship.
Yeah, just one second, the deferral's on the floor, moved by Counselor Twill, seconded by Counselor Duran, and who just asked to comment?
Counselor Bernard.
Counselor Bernard, go right ahead, sir.
Thank you, worship. My recollection of this, and we did talk about this a couple of months ago, and it was in a closed session, because under the MGA, when you're talking about purchasing properties, it is to be in a closed session. We did give direction for staff to move ahead and do the negotiation to prepare this for us. Usually the reason why is because the property was for sale, and when people get wind that the city's looking to buy it, obviously somebody else can buy it and sell it to the city for twice the price. So the conversation I recall was, these were for sale, it was a really high price, we would purchase them, nothing's going to happen for at least a couple of years, there would be public meetings, if this must be to go through, the city could also turn around and sell the property. My recollection was this is an opportunity to purchase them right now, and now is the time.
Yeah, good, okay.
So for that, that reason, I'll be moving ahead.
Your worship, can I speak the second time in the motion?
On the deferral, yes, Counselor Twill, you can speak on the deferral.
Thank you, thank you. Counselor Bernard, I understand your position, but I think it's more advantageous, because if you're going to purchase a property of this magnitude, these two properties, and they're moving in the direction of constructing, constructing infrastructure, and before we spend a half a million dollars or more, I believe we owe it to the residents, if there's an expectation out of that community, and the residents are demanding a public meeting to hear, to hear the presentation from the, from the engineers about traffic patterns and impact of traffic through that entire community, again, I'll reiterate, Ash Drive, Mount Edward Road, Towers Road, all in through there, we have a responsibility to bring that information to them first. That's what they're expecting, and I think we should, we should have that meeting in the next 30 days, and give them residents that comfort zone, that they're being, that they're being heard, and we're soliciting their advice and their recommendations. I don't think there's a rush, I mean, if those properties are going to sit there for two years, what's the rush? There is no rush. So let's go, let's go to the public meeting.
Just one second.
I don't think anybody's agreeing to the public meeting, and I think the public meeting will go ahead.
It's going to happen, yes.
I think they're being told, and what makes sense is that you purchase the properties now while you get them at a good rate and a good deal, to go to the public meeting. If, if this proposal doesn't go through, then sell the property.
It's a drive.
So it's not like it says to go into a public meeting, talk about purchasing property, and then, and then the person, well, it's going to double price, knowing the city's interest in it.
Okay.
And that is the whole concept of having a meeting, the highest possible doors, and that's why we agree to have staff move ahead. There's no, don't be saying we're not having a public meeting.
There won't be a public meeting.
I think I heard the chair plan, heard him saying that there was plans to go to a public meeting.
Yeah, there is.
So we don't see this happening for at least a couple of years, I believe that's why the residents say, look like a reminder for at least two years.
Okay, just, just, just in a point of reference, Mr. Kelly, when the city purchased the property, the green space at the corner of Water and Prince, for over 1.3 million, was there a public consultation?
No, worship.
What's that?
No, worship.
Okay, there wasn't a public consultation?
No, your worship.
No, I know, I just wanted.
I tell you what the fear was, the developers wanted to build six stores, and the residents weren't interested.
Yeah, but.
There was no public, there was no public meeting when we purchased the home of Corner Pond and Queen either.
Oh, there was a public consultation on the home that we purchased, the corner of Pond and Queen?
No, there wasn't, there wasn't any.
Okay.
Your worship, can I ask a question?
Counsel Revert, yes, if you have a question, go right ahead, sir.
Great, thank you. This question is for the CEO of Peter Kelly. You know, what's the, what's the finding in charge of this when it comes to, when do we need, when do we need to list the findings, is it, is it met properly?
So all other aspects have been met, the other piece that has not been met is subject to council approval, that's why it's here, and the funds were to be transferred tomorrow if council concurs.
Okay, so.
And that part do you agree with?
Yes.
So revoting?
Thank you.
The, the closing has been extended for council to give its final sign-off.
Okay, revoting on the deferral, who's got the question? Question?
Question.
Counsel Duffy. Okay, on the deferral, Counselor Yankoff?
Not in favor.
At me. Counselor Duffy?
Yes.
In the deferral?
You're in favor of the deferral?
We're voting on the deferral.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, no, sorry.
Counselor Duran?
Yes, in favor.
Counselor Twill?
In favor.
Counselor Revert?
Not in favor.
Counselor McLeod?
Not in favor.
Counselor Ramsey?
Not in favor.
Deputy?
In favor.
Counselor, oh, no, McCabe is in conflict. Counsel Bernard?
Not in favor.
Okay, so there are.
Six to three.
Six to three, Counselor McCabe is in conflict. The three that are against are Counselors Twill.
Duran.
Duran and Deputy Mayor Cody. Okay, so the deferral's on the floor, so I'm going to put a question on the floor for the resolution. Question, called?
Yes, question.
Yay. Do you want to read, we can, we don't have to read it over again.
Read it.
Okay, who's in favor of the resolution? Counselor Yankoff, this is to purchase the land?
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Yay. Okay, Counselor Duffy?
Yes.
Counselor Dron?
No.
Counselor Twill?
No.
Counselor Revert? Counselor Revert?
Tell it off, worship.
Counselor McLeod?
In favor.
Counselor Ramsey?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Cody?
No.
Counselor Bernard?
In favor.
What's that mean?
Five, five, three.
What is it?
Try it right again, worship.
Is that Counselor Revert?
Yeah, I just got this next one back, I'm in favor.
Are you in favor?
I am.
Yeah, six to three opposed, Counselors Duran, Twill, and the deputy, deputy mayor, correct?
Yes, worship.
Okay, so that carries it? Okay, so it's six to three, yeah.
You're always good.
I'm just, Counselors, go ahead there, Counselor Yankoff?
Is this something that we can put out for any of the public that hasn't gotten the chance to listen to, can this go out as a PSA, so that the public does know that there's going to be public consultation on this stuff, so even after that for months?
And, and also on the short-term rentals, and also on the, yes, so Doug is watching what's going on tonight, so you're making a request, a PSA to vote on this issue?
Yeah.
Yeah, on, on the major traffic study and a public meeting?
Yes, that the public does know that we're going to have public consultation, and that if the public doesn't want to proceed with this, and we sell those properties.
Okay, thank you, duly noted. Deputy, anything else? That's it?
No, worship.
Okay. Okay, you have resources?
Thank you, worship. The Communications and Administration Committee met on January 19th, minutes are in your package, and I think the mayor has already mentioned that the website is on the fritz right now, and that does fall under our department.
Oh, sorry about that.
Yeah, so we will hopefully keep you posted on that, I'm sure it's very frustrating for the public, and I apologize to everyone that's trying to access it. I have no resolutions for your consideration, but I will do my best to answer your questions.
Thank you kindly. Any questions to Counselor Yankoff? Good, you're all right there, Counselor? Good, let's turn the page. Protective and Emergency Services, Counselor Gregory Revert?
Thank you, worship. So Detective and Public Service Committee met on January 26th, minutes are included in your package, we do our first reading of a post-COVID-19 temporary patio program bylaw, it's concluded, they're appearing tonight, and pretty much looks like last year, which allows for, for additional outdoor patios while we continue to go through COVID-19 and the struggle for police assistance we're facing. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question.
Counselor Twill, question we have?
Counselor Revert, thank you for your report. First thing I'd like to do is congratulate Chief Paul Smith on his temporary years of service, Shell Town Police Department, and the services of this community, and wish him very well in his retirement. Counselor Revert, as you know, I've been very consistent with, with wanting the reintroduction of the Traffic Division here in the City of Shell Town, there's not a week this cabot that goes by, the residents are concerned about speeding traffic in the neighborhoods, in our neighborhood parks, and particularly school zones. So just want to, want to reinforce, reiterate how impaired it is that we bring back that Traffic Division and get, get that, that put through the responsibility, accountability of governing administered traffic violations, and more specifically speeding traffic.
Well, thank you, Counselor Twill, again, I'm sorry that I was a broke record here, I guess I make the two of us. I, you know, I talked, I just already say that, you know, we need to be for, yes, by the truth, I take additional dollars, additional resources to the department, and with that comes cost. So during the budget process, we are, we are looking forward, additional, additional budgetary items, if you will, or ask, so we can hire the four officers that are needed in order to put together this Traffic Division, we can't take from within, if we did take from within, we'd have to eliminate the, the budget, the streetcar, so, so that, that can't happen. So in order to make this happen, we need to get additional funds, four officers, and that is coming to council for this year's budget.
You have my full support.
Perfect, thank you.
You have my full support, I'm on the record, I think it's fair that we bring back that Traffic Division.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any other questions? And, Mr. Kelly, it's an amendment to the patio, right?
Correct, yes.
Just, okay, go ahead, sir.
So it is the City of Shell Town COVID-19 Temporary Patio Program Bylaw Amendment, the Bylaw 2020 CTP 01A. The purpose of this amending bylaw is to change the effective date of temporary outdoor patios within the City of Shell Town from October 31st, 2020, to October 31st, 2021. Moved by Counsel Revert, seconded by Counsel Ramsey, that the City of Shell Town COVID-19 Temporary Patio Program be ran a first time, worship.
Okay, any discussion? No? Okay, shall it pass?
Pass.
Pass.
Counselor, Counselor Duran, gay, neg?
Pass.
Counsel Bernard? Counsel Bernard?
Pass.
And Counsel McLeod?
Pass.
Ten, zero.
Your worship, we're with Counsel Revert, seconded by Counsel Ramsey, that this bylaw now be approved as a city bylaw, and it be entitled the City of Shell Town COVID-19 Temporary Patio Program Bylaw, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, worship.
Shall it pass?
Pass.
Pass?
Pass.
Counsel McLeod?
Pass.
Counsel Bernard?
Pass.
And Counsel Revert, I think I heard.
Pass.
Good, ten, zero. Is that it, sir?
Question, your worship, different label?
Yes?
Counsel McLeod.
Yeah, Counsel McLeod, go right ahead.
For Counsel Revert, you could answer, and I'm not sure if I can go back, I just noticed something in the, in the package that I left a question on Saturday.
Go ahead.
Yeah, sure, so, thank, thank you, Counsel Revert, for your report, just noticing here the speed monitoring, and what Counsel Twill was talking about the traffic division, that I just noticed that the speed monitoring, if you look at it, you know, it all, it all seems like everything is the right side of the city, like there's no, no speeding going on in the streets. If you just look at them all, they're all from the other frontiers of the, of the city. Just wondering, is there a particular reason for that?
Well, I think, I would certainly say back, back to the city, I know that Counselor Duffy, I think, has some information, has some concerns around the traffic controls down in this area as well, and I think that staff have looked at those, I'm not sure if Counsel Duffy, they got back to you, but I can certainly, I can certainly have the chief send something out to council as to the reasons why they patrol certain areas.
The deputy, the deputies here, Counsel Revert, do you want him to speak to it, or you all right?
What's that?
The deputy, Deputy Police Chief McConnell's here, do you want to?
Sir, he can speak, right, sir?
Yeah, he's right.
Even I should interject first, your worship.
You go right ahead, sir.
That, that little project I was working on with Ms. McLean and myself, we've hit a few snags in it, and I have one of the young engineering students giving us a hand now, so I haven't gotten the report to the staff, the police staff, so.
But it's forthcoming.
Pardon?
It's forthcoming.
Oh, it's forthcoming, yeah, as soon as we do it, a little polish and a little massage.
Yeah. Deputy, do you want to address anything?
Sure, your worship, I don't think the actual numbers reflect the actual patrol, patrols and monitoring of speeding in those residential areas. You know, the speeds are greater in the, in the arterial areas of the city, but, you know, we certainly are committed to monitoring and doing enforcement in the residential areas also, but, you know, sometimes the perception of speed is not the reality, and we've seen that quite a bit, but it's something that we know that's concerned for residents, and we'll make sure we, make sure we monitor that and, and enforcement appropriate.
Good.
Question, if I could, your worship?
Go right ahead, Counsel McLeod.
Thank you very much, thank you, Deputy Chief, just with what you've just said about, you know, it's not always what it seems to be, but I've got signatures of 200 people on one street that says there's speeding, and I've had a hard time telling them that it's an illusion, so just, there will be a meeting coming forward, and I hope you're there for that, but I don't think that's going to go over very well. There's certainly speeding going on within the city's streets and the school zones, and it just concerns me when I see all the, the networks on the outskirts and not in the inside, because especially my work, you know, it's a cut through from, from one part of town to the other, and there's certainly, you know, I'm not able to tell the residents that it's, that they're not seeing the speeding, and like, but anyway, it's very frustrating, thank you.
Deputy, what is it, respond or just leave it?
Certainly, Counsel McLeod, your worship, that we know, we're not naive to think there's not speeding, but as we, you know, put our resources out there, you know, it's important that we put them at the, in the areas where accidents are statistically more apt to happen, speeds are greater, there's more, you know, more chance of, of, you know, serious risk to the public, and, and although we hear your citizens' concerns, and we'll do our best to address them, you know, it's, it's, it's not, we can't be on every street at that couple of times, that's, that's the reality.
Again, just to, just to comment, just to comment that, you know, I'm not saying that you're not in the town, I just, it just seems funny how there's no speeding anywhere in town. It's out of bounds, you can university, if anybody has, we'll pick this for another, another time, thank you.
Okay, do we have any, no, that's all, okay, can we move on?
Go ahead.
Yeah, Parks and Recreation?
Your worship, may I have a comment?
And he just left.
Oh, Deputy Chiefs?
Just one second. What's your, okay, Counsel Duran, just, we're trying to get them back.
Hold on, I don't, I don't need the deputy back, I'm just, I'm just, I just want to comment.
Oh, no, 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 they're okay, they're okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, you know, we've known there's, there's like 450 miles of streets in the city, we've talked about the Traffic Division, and, and, you know, I think the chief and the deputies have given a statistical report on it's better to have 60 or 70 officers doing traffic 70 officers doing traffic than two or three. Um, you know, I, I, I have to acknowledge the police officers, I, I know a lot of them personally, and they go to work and they're, they're overwhelmed, uh, with calls, criminal code calls, all the mental health service, and, and, you know, someone's like, there's speeding on my street. Well, I understand that, but it's hard for them to go in and do a 12-hour shift and try to make everybody happy. You know, we have people here saying, well, there's drug houses, so there's groups of police officers investigating that, there's assaults, they're investigating that, and then there's speeders, and they're investigating that. So when you work 12 hours, a hard work in the city, uh, you're exhausted, and, and we've been pushing for extra officers last year, for four people, and, and that'd be one, just one person per shift, and I hope we get it back during this budget. And, and the chair here, uh, was Mr. Rever, Counsel Rever, has, 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 uh, said, we're, we're looking for men, so we continuously say, you know, there's speeders on our streets, there's speeders on every street, it's like there's tunnels, you know, I, I'm just, I'm just getting frustrated that everyone, or, uh, a lot of people think bringing back this traffic unit is going to cause all these problems to go away. There's only so many police officers working in a day or a night, they have so many things to do, and, and if we get a traffic section, I, I don't think that they're going to be able to, uh, get all these problems solved. And historically, when we did have a traffic section, they couldn't do it then, that's why they, they got rid of it and went to the whole department, working the best they can on traffic. So, you know, I, I guess it's, it's time for, you know, the council to sit down to see what we can do, but I just don't feel that, you know, politically putting something forth of a traffic unit is going to solve the problem.
Yeah.
Like, like Counsel McLeod said, I guess it's better discussion at another time, but I'm just getting frustrated right now.
And Counsel Dran? Counsel, Counsel, no, 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 I think, Counsel, no.
I only had one, I only had one go, Ray.
Hold on, hold on, Counsel Dran, uh, that will go up under the operational budget. We're going to move on, Counsel Twill, it's seven o'clock. Okay, Perks, Perks and Recreation?
Thank you, your worship, uh, the Parks and Recreation Leader Activity Committee met on January 21, and again on February 4, copy the draft minutes where everybody's packing. Uh, there's no resolutions for council consideration, your worship, this month. Uh, would like to say a Volunteer of the Month Award, uh, for February goes to Vernon Budgie, don't help, because everybody knows Budgie. Uh, Vernon is the director of officials and referee assignment with the Charlestown Minor Hockey Association, so Vernon has a lot of volunteer experience, good to see him, uh, recognized tonight, so he's been involved as a volunteer with minor hockey as a coach, official, and administrator since 1979. And in his current role with Charlestown Minor Hockey Association, he coordinates the officiating program, which includes recruiting, training, and assignment of games. He has held this for distance since 2010. Now Vernon currently volunteers with the hockey, the YAD officiating program as well as a supervisor. Now I can tell you, uh, other volunteer positions he's held in the Charlestown area over the past few years include, uh, was general manager of the YAD junior roundy baseball team for four years, and he was general manager of Hallam College Hurricane Football Program for nine years. So congratulations to Vernon for volunteer of the month, well deserved.
Well deserved, for sure.
Your worship, uh, let's say the minister in the package, uh, if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer them. Uh, one highlight, uh, you know, Mr. Sean Murphy was in, uh, gave a presentation on the West Early Trail Connector System and what he'd let, he go there, I believe he was asking for, uh, the possibility of some money to be put in the, uh, the capital budget, uh, for our share anyway, not share where that's going, I, I don't know if he brought it up to find me or not, uh, uh, so anyway, that's part of the budget discussion, I think it's CADC that would be the lead on this, uh, and we'll see where that goes. Uh, and your worship, that's it, and like I said, if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer.
And Counsel, Counsel Bernard, on Saturday's Guardian, there was him and Gord McNeely, they plan to have a public meeting on this proposed, uh, trail on the western side of the city.
They don't.
Okay. Counsel McCabe has a question for you, Counsel Bernard.
No, I have not a question, more comments, kudos to Counselor Bernard, and Counselor the Ward for, um, the new Gordy Griffin rink again, I've been out there a few times, and that rink is full, all day, all evening, you see people of all ages, families, and I just really think, um, kudos to you and your community for that, I would love to see us really focusing on some different infrastructures we can put around so residents can enjoy those opportunities. We talk big plans, but something as simple as that has really done a really great job for that community health program, so good job.
Thank you, uh, you know, within the works, uh, Counsel McCabe, for at least two years, not three years, uh, Gordy Griffin did such a great job out there, flooding on his own property for, as you know, 22 years, uh, most of the time was coming to an end and there was a ton of kids, uh, I know there was a study, university did a study a number of years ago, and, uh, in that study they recognized that Hillsport Park did have, uh, more kids per square mile than anywhere else in the city, so there was not a lot of kids, and, uh, but certainly not able to saw different than you are, um, we knew that there would be, uh, a lot of interest to, uh, get on the earth, so, uh, good, thank you for that, and I do want to pass on to the staff, and they're doing such a great job, please, you know, the weather that we've had thus far to get all of those 12 rinks up and going, and what some people may not know is there's, there's some other rinks in the Charlestown area that volunteers put them up themselves, and, uh, we've been trying to reach out to them, whatever we can do, uh, we have put some lights up in some of those rinks, uh, so, uh, you know, we, we, we had 12 that we responded for, but there's other rinks that volunteers do on our property, and we look to do anything we can to help that.
Yeah, and, and the rink down on Water Street in Ward 1 is always busy, it's a great rink too.
It is, yeah, yeah.
It's, it's great for participation.
That's why I think what the Ford Authority wants to do there is create addition to that. Uh, you know, have your fire pits, pick the tables, you know, people be skating and then they take a break on the fire pit, so I think it's a, it's a great environment, it's a good idea.
Good. Any other questions?
Yep, right here.
Go, Counsel Twill, yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you for your report, Counsel Bernard, I want to, uh, I want to bring up the topic you just discussed, as you know, uh, when we approved the, uh, outdoor, um, multipurpose facility in your district, uh, that was the model for all awards throughout the city, and what I'm interested in knowing is, uh, is the plan for, for further, uh, further construction of facilities of that, that specific magnitude, so that, uh, residents throughout the entire city can, can have that same experience. I know that it's going over extremely well, uh, at, at Hillsport Park, and I think that's terrific and that's tremendous, but we're also looking at equal level planning, so I'm hoping in this year's budget, there's going to be money put in the budget so that we can start to chip away, and, and, you know, if we get five wards this year, I think that would be fantastic, if we get the other five wards, say the problem here, to me, that would be really progressive, really productive, and, uh, all citizens throughout the City of Charlestown will have that same experience, uh, regardless of what the demographics is. So I'm looking forward to, uh, that type of development in our city.
Yeah, I think we have Counsel Twill, and, uh, yes, it is, it is going over well, um, and I mean, the budget will tell, tell a tale, but, uh, my understanding is, uh, once, once we, once we've had a good look at this project, and, uh, yeah, the, the decision was made that, you know what, this could be the model for everyone's moving forward, I think we all agree to that. Um, I don't know if we ever agreed that there's going to be 10 of them in the City of Charlestown, and I think what staff is trying to do now is, staff's plan was always to evaluate this one, see how this is going, work out any kinks, and also look at other locations where a rink like this could go, and that's, that's, that's what council has been, or, sorry, that's what staff has been working on, see where they could go, where they fit in properly, uh, you have washrooms nearby, you have parking nearby and so on, um, so we're waiting for those recommendations to come back from council, or, I'm sorry, from staff. So I, I can't tell you how many we're going to do, I can't tell you where they're going, I, I really don't know, I'm not an expert in that. You know, when I put this forward, it was because, uh, I knew we had good land, uh, by the community center, where we currently had a smaller ice pad that staff was, was doing, uh, and then Gordy Griffin had this just off the street that he was doing for, for a time or two, so always knew this was going to be popular, and I think what we're waiting for from staff is to take the time to evaluate different locations throughout the city, make their recommendations back to us, and then we take it from there.
Well, I, I, I have to bring up a couple of points, Counsel Bernard, the understanding was, when we, we approved that expenditure, right, to go ahead with that, with the construction of that facility, uh, that multipurpose facility in Hillsport Park, the understanding was, is that each ward would have the same opportunity and the same, that, that, that same, uh, you know, ability to, to be able to showcase that kind of a venue in their respective ward, and that would be done equally and fairly, that was the understanding, when we passed the resolution, to prove, right, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, so I think, I think, you know, it's great to say staff are looking at this, and staff are looking at that, the decision was made.
Yeah.
When we voted, voted for your, your expenditure for Hillsport Park, the decision was made that each ward would be able to have facility of that magnitude.
Yeah.
And at the staff of having challenges, then they should contact the respective counselor and take it to their respective ward and to see where, where, where it could be constructed.
Okay, so Counsel Twill, I think Counsel Bernard said this is a capital budget issue, the capital budget will be forward when Deputy Mayor, the next week or so? Yeah, so let's discuss it.
Just before I, just before we finish this, I mean, there's other things that, that we had discussed, whether council is interested or not, uh, but there's also conversation about the possibility of, uh, an artificial ice surface.
Correct.
Somewhere in the city that, you know, regardless of the weather, the surface can be up and going, and it was something when I was in Halifax over the weekend, you know, it was, it was raining, it was plus five, plus six, uh, but they're all up skating on the old, uh, but yet it's all green grass, you know, I mean, so, you know, the city wanted to look at an artificial surface somewhere, whether it's Fountains Hall, or whether it's wherever, um, so there was, you know, it, it's not, I don't think it's just a matter of saying, here, staff put up 10 rinks, that's enough, I think the staff has to look at the location, see where it's going to make sense.
Okay, thank you very much, Counsel.
And that's exactly, you know.
Thank you, Counsel Bernard. Okay.
You're welcome.
Water and Sewer, Counsel Bob Duran.
That's me, your worship.
And your managers, and your manager's here, Richard McCune.
Thank you. Uh, the Water and Sewer Utilities Committee, uh, met on January 28, and the minutes for not leaving are in your pockets. Uh, a lot of our discussion this month, uh, had to do with, mainly with the budget discussions that we're all going to be faced with there in the next month or so, uh, so we do not have any resolutions for your consideration tonight, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask me, and I'll, I'll try to do my best to answer them, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counsel. Move on. Oh. Richard, no questions. Thank you, Richard. Thank you very much, Richard. Public Works and Urban Beautification Committee? Mr. Adams is here. Mr. Adams? Mr. McLeod, Counsel McLeod?
I'm ready to go.
Go ahead, sir.
Public Works and Urban Beautification Committee met on January 27, the draft minutes are included in the package, and the City Board of Person's Disabilities met on January 12, uh, and draft minutes are in there itself, and, uh, I have no resolution for consideration, but I would like to give a shout out to the Public Works staff, uh, the timing of this last snowfall wasn't exactly great, and, uh, they worked hard all through the night, uh, and as we see, uh, as we see the, you know, the snow post clearing process is still underway, so, uh, just want to give a shout out to the end guys that they did a phenomenal job. Thank you, your worship, I'll answer any questions, but I can't.
Counsel, Counsel McCabe, do you have a question?
I do, I'm still.
Mr. Adams is here, too, our Chief Executive.
I know, I thank you, I just was noticing in your minutes, thank you for your report, Counsel McLeod, just noticing in your, uh, minutes that there was a lengthy discussion on the stormwater research, um, and that it was going to be referred back to council for some discussion, so I'm wondering if we know when we're going to have an opportunity to adhere, the concerns, have some discussion, I appreciate the cosmetic reason for, for stormwater and, uh, but I still, you know, know that it is a part of if we're going to have active transportation trails and stuff throughout the city that the ditches need to be filled in for those, uh, asphalt strips and things to be placed down, so do you know when we're going to be having further discussion about that?
Counsel McLeod?
Thank you very much for your questions, Counsel McCabe, uh, so, uh, at our, at our last meeting, the stormwater research, uh, discussion went on, um, as you see it in the package there, and, and basically, uh, um, we, we felt that if there's a safety situation where that ditch has to be filled in, that we certainly would be doing it, um, but I need to counsel made a curve, uh, that water infrastructure, uh, around the city had to be fixed first, and, uh, and that's where, uh, we're at with that. Um, as far as, uh, pathways, uh, um, uh, again, you know, it's a big city, and we're, we're trying to fit everybody in, and, uh, if Councilor, or sorry, if Counsel Adams and manager would like to comment any further on that, I'm more than willing to let them do it, thank you.
Uh, your worship, the only other thing I'd add is, is, uh, if there's an operational need, again, if we need the additional right-of-way for, you know, an active transportation lane, or we're widening the road for whatever reason, uh, and a ditch does need to be filled in because we don't have additional right-of-way to do it, uh, then that would be likely another justification for filling ditches.
Good. Counsel McCabe, second question?
And I guess we'll see it when the, uh, capital budget comes out, whether or not we've again allotted for money to be part of that capital budget for those, I guess we're always saying projects like AT trails are expensive and these things, but when we have money that we budget for stormwater management, if we have some of that work done, it might reduce the cost if we're looking at trying to do an AT trail at a later time, regardless of where in the city that would be trapped. If the dictionary info, would that help?
Go ahead.
So, yes, uh, I mean, I think going forward, Counsel McCabe, the rest of the situation is to, is to look at each one individually as it comes along, um, I think that'd be a fair assessment to say at this point, until we get, uh, total dollars and see where we're at, that, that's, uh, that'd be the fair thing to say to that.
Counsel?
I was just wondering if there was anything in the budget, I'll see that when the budget comes.
Counselor, uh, sorry, Mr. Kelly, give something back?
Yeah, just to also clarify that, um, under the active transit, uh, taxation, we get the $0.50 from the Department, so rather than we spend $100 on it, then we can make it part of that overall project.
Okay, great, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yep, right here.
Counsel Twill?
Thank you, thank you for your report, Counsel McLeod, Counsel McLeod, two free questions I'd like to bring your attention, first question I have is, who made the decision to make six lanes of traffic on University Avenue and, and did the city pay for it, or did the university pay for it? Who made that decision?
I will pass that over to Operations, uh, to Counsel Adams.
Mr. Adams?
Uh, your worship.
You want to give a little background, too?
Uh, so, so that project you speak to, Counselor, so that was a project initiated by UPEI, uh, they approached the city as they wanted to build a private road, uh, to have an additional access point to this, uh, to University Avenue, just for security, safety reasons, um, uh, so the project was funded 100% by UPEI, um, and they took the design and all the work for it.
So, so they made the decision to make it six lanes on University Avenue?
Uh, so for the six lanes you speak of, originally it was only supposed to be five, there was an engineering design error, uh, that had happened, and as a result of that, uh, it had to be six lanes.
That's right.
Okay, uh, your worship, the second point I'd like to ask Counsel McLeod is, uh, recently, what's been coming to the forefront in terms of, uh, infrastructure here in our city, there seems to be more emphasis on, on, on infrastructure for vehicle as opposed to pedestrian, pedestrian traffic and pedestrian safety. Uh, recently, uh, in the media, there's major concerns by residents that want to cross Allen Street in a safe, secure manner, uh, at Walton Drive, and it's not very safe, uh, residents, uh, residents don't feel safe crossing Allen Street, most are coming there and they're speeding, uh, speeding at a pretty good rate, and there's no real consideration for the pedestrian traffic, so what I'm recommending for that, to solve that issue, residents are coming forward with some real good recommendations, overhead, crosswalk, white sidewalks on the north side, uh, better lighting, but what I'd like to recommend to, uh, Public Works is to have a traffic engineer come in and look at Allen Street, say from, uh, from, from the Roundabout, all the way down to University Avenue, let's look at that, uh, that section of Allen Street, and see what we can do to make that much more safer for pedestrian traffic. Right now it's not safe, uh, Allen Street, I, I've been for a number of years, the third busiest street in Charlestown, when it's the main east-west connector from the old city to Queen Elizabeth Hospital, to the, uh, Charlestown Civic Center, Charlestown Driving Park, people looking to go to Stratford, uh, Morrell, whatever the place may be. So I'd like to bring that, bring that forward, Counsel McLeod, to have your committee look at that, and look at some, uh, possible designs and some, uh, preliminary, uh, preliminary conceptual designs, so we can take it to the community, and the other issue that's come to the forefront is the Boys and Girls Club, I know that, uh, lights were, uh, streetlight was, was put there, but one of the parents contacted me and said that despite the intentions of installing the streetlight, it's still not safe for, for, uh, for, uh, parents that are trying to walk their, uh, children across, uh, St. Peter's Road to the Boys and Girls Club, and, and they're, they're coming forward with some recommendations, like maybe some, some red lights and, and other mechanisms that could possibly help to slow that traffic down and make it safe for the pedestrian traffic. Those are some, uh, some, some of the issues I wanted to bring to the forefront under Public Works tonight.
Counsel McLeod, did you take note of it?
Yeah, thank you very much, thank you very much, Counsel Twill, on the Allen Street project, uh, I certainly would recommend to take this back to our committee, um, we all know that Allen Street is the third busiest street, and, and, um, I think, uh, in passing with Mr. Adams, I already had mentioned that, that we would have it on our next meeting to, to see where it goes with that and what, what it could take to, to see some improvements there. And on the Boys and Girls Club, I had numerous discussions with the manager of the Public Works, uh, sorry, of the Boys and Girls Club, and, um, talking with Mr. Works, sorry, of the Boys and Girls Club, and talking with Mr. Adams as well about it, we did do the light, but the light's not working. And there is some design thing that had to be done in front of the, you know, let's say it was fire and all before, right?
Yeah.
When the parents, yeah, when the parents come to pick up their children, the car has almost become part of the pub, right? It's the kid, it's time you get out to look past the car to see if there's anyone coming, you're almost on the street. So there is a design idea there that Mr. Adams is going to look at, bring forward this spring, and as of now, it's hard to do it, but we all certainly, it is on the radar, Counselor Twill.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you for economic development. Keep moving here. You, Mr. Adams, do you have those issues down? Did you write them all down? We'll get your verbatim minutes. Okay, economic development.
Thank you. The Economic Development Tourism Event Management Committee met on January 20th. The open draft minutes are included in your package. There is one resolution for your consideration tonight. The Arts Advisory Board met in January 26th. Those minutes are also included in your package. Our tourism event management teams have been very busy since our last meeting. I'm sure if you read through the minutes, you'll have a better understanding of the many projects that they have on the go. A few highlights at this time, the Jack Frost Winter Fest presents Ice City, in which the city is a major partner, will begin on Friday, and will run through March 14th. We're encouraging everyone to check out the evolving schedule events at discovercharlottetown.com/icecity. In addition to Ice City, our department has partnered with several other organizations, including Fusion Charlottetown, Confederation Center of the Arts, Emerald Isle Carriage Tours, and Wake Cap Entertainment to develop, to deliver, excuse me, CPO-approved winter activities. The city is also hosting Islander Family Fun Day on February 15th. The event will offer the opportunity to local families to take in free, CPO-approved programming in celebration of this mid-winter break. Just noticed that the registration for this has been delayed a little bit because our website's down, so they're hoping to have that up and ready for the 10th of February, I think is what it said.
We're praying for that.
So, yeah, keep looking, get registered for some good fun. As previously, as part of the previously announced Winter Lights Initiative, our team is running two affiliated community activities. A Winter Wonderland Home Decorating Contest, which will be judged this week, as well as a Winter Lights Photo Challenge, which will run through to the end of February. It's been great to see the residents taking part in both of these initiatives. Planning is underway for a Sport Tourism Canada Sport Event Congress in April. Our Events Development Officer, Wayne Long, has been selected to serve on a national panel to talk about the success of hosting the CPL this summer in a bubble setting. Please join me also in congratulating our Tourism and Events Coordinator, Charlotte Nicholson, who was recently named to Support Tourism Canada's Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Advisory Group. This national advisory group is made of 13 individuals from across the country, and Charlotte will be a wonderful addition to their mandate. Our team has another great month on the event side of operations. They say to stay tuned for announcements, and also they are going to, they're continuing work on the finalization of the draft operational budget. Any questions, we'll do our best to answer.
And Mr. Wayne Long's here.
He sure is.
He's here to help. Counselor McCabe, I just, I know you're involved with the Q League, but I just want to thank the Q League for just pushing ahead, to have games, to have their games, both Prince Edward Island and Nova Scotia.
Correct, Your Worship.
And it's a lot of work to make that happen, so kudos to the management on both sides, Nova Scotia and Prince Edward Island, for making this happen. Well done.
They're smart players, too.
They are.
That's all I have anything to say.
Any questions?
You have a question, Your Worship?
You go right ahead there, Counselor McLeod.
Not so much a question, more a comment. I'd also would like to thank the committee on their, on the winter event celebration that we're trying to pull out here. And I also like to also, no, we're not having Jack Frost, it's certainly wonderful to see that the city is promoting for people to go outdoors, make some fun, in other ways. And just a hat off again also to Public Works staff for building the small hill for, for the kids. It's not really a priority to be building T Hills or the Marvin Hills, it's, and just, you know, it was a wonderful, that staff stepped up and did that, without any questions at all. Just, I believe the project all together, thank you.
Great collaboration. What did you ask?
Where's the hillhead?
It's going to be in front of Fountains Hall, isn't it?
Behind Fountains Hall.
Behind.
And that open parking lot.
So they're taking the snow that they're removing, and they're making a hill with the snow, I think, is that correct? Yeah.
Send a team down there from City.
That's what happens when you work collaboratively.
Yes. Out of the silos.
It's wonderful.
Okay, that sounds great. If you're in town.
Your Worship, moved by Counselor McCabe, second by Counselor McLeod, that the city of Charlottetown entered into an agreement that is attached with the Hotel Association of PEI, Discover Charlottetown, a meetings and convention PEI, with respect to the tourism accommodation, accommodation levy, or the TAL, and that the mayor and city are hereby authorized to execute the standard contract agreement, Your Worship.
Okay. Question?
Question's called.
Counselor Yankoff.
Yankoff.
Counselor Duffy. In favor. Counselor Duran.
Favorit.
Counselor Twill.
Favorit.
Counselor Rever.
Favorit.
Counselor McLeod.
Favorit.
Counselor Ramsey.
In favor.
Deputy.
Favorit.
Counselor McCabe.
In favor.
Counselor Bernard.
Favorit.
10-0, carried. Is that it? Okay. Next report is Counselor Twill, Environment and Sustainability. Counselor Twill?
Reports in your pocket, Your Worship, and I'll certainly do my best to answer any questions. We have one resolution for Council's consideration, and our manager is with us from Olandale. That will certainly be able to help me answer any questions. So that's, that's, that's the report for this month.
Thank you, Counselor Twill. Any questions? So we do have a first reading to amend the...
There's one motion, Your Worship, and also the tree protection bylaws.
So the resolution, sorry, sir.
Moved by Counselor Twill, second by Counselor Bernard, that whereas the city of Charlottetown has adopted the 2018 Community Energy Plan in order to reduce energy use and greenhouse gas emissions in its operations and within the Charlottetown community, and whereas the city has partnered with Honeywell to develop an energy performance contract which identified energy savings, renewable energy, greenhouse gas emissions reductions, opportunities, code issues, and, and deferred maintenance for all city facilities, and whereas the Federation of Towns Palis provides funding for municipalities to implement energy upgrade opportunities through the Green Municipal Fund, therefore be resolved that the city of Charlottetown sign an energy performance contract with Honeywell and apply for a partial cost of the project through the FCM's low-interest loan, Your Worship.
Okay. Do you want to add anything to that, Counselor Twill, or is that all right?
No, that's fine.
Good. Question?
Question's called.
Counselor Yankoff.
In favor.
Counselor Duffy, in favor. Counselor Duran.
Favorit.
Counselor Twill.
Favorit.
Counselor Rever.
Favorit.
Counselor McLeod.
Favorit.
Counselor Ramsey.
In favor.
Deputy. Counselor McCabe. Counselor Bernard.
Favorit.
10-0. Okay, sir.
Your Worship, the city of Charlottetown Tree Protection Amendment bylaw, bylaw 2019, TP 01B, to amend the city of Charlottetown Tree Protection bylaw to clarify when trees on a property line are city-owned trees, and when the city conducts tree maintenance on private property. Moved by Counselor Twill, second by Counselor Bernard, that be resolved that the bylaw to amend the city of Charlottetown Tree Protection bylaw be ran a first time, Your Worship.
Shella, carry.
Pass.
Pass. Pass.
10-0.
Your Worship, moved by Counselor Twill, second by Counselor Bernard, resolve that the bylaw now be approved as a city bylaw, and that it be entitled the city of Charlottetown Tree Protection bylaw, and that it be ran a second time at the next public meeting of council, Your Worship.
Shella, carry.
Carry.
Pass.
10-0. Okay, sir. That's it, Counselor Twill. Thank you very much, sir.
Your Worship, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the staff.
Yes.
Senior administration in the, in the department. We've got, we've got great staff, young staff that are making quite a contribution, and they're, they're breaking, breaking ground here and taking this, this department and our responsibilities to another level, and it's really exciting, it's an exciting time for some of the issues that we're tackling.
Fully agree with you, Counselor Twill. Must be one of the first times we agreed, but hey, I fully agree with you.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, Mr. Brown.
I fully agree with you.
First time, is it?
Well, you know, this is a good start.
Yeah, but the report's on getting, it's the first time.
Next report, Council Advisory Committee. Counselor Yankoff.
Last report. So the Council Advisory Committee met on January 29th, as well as again today at noon. And as Counselor Ramsey alluded to earlier, we will be putting out a notice to the public for, I believe it's five committee members for the Youth Advisory Committee and four for the housing, is that correct?
Housing and affordable and accessible housing. Thank you.
So if any of you know of anyone in your wards that might be interested, they should keep an eye on that, but probably not on the website in the next few days. And I have two resolutions for your consideration. One is for the recommendation of Counselor Greg Rever to be our city rep for the Vision 2050 Committee that is here in Charlottetown that meets, I'd say, probably four, five times a year. And the second one is a committee that I used to be part of, which is the Capital Cities Commission. It is a, it's a, it's a very busy, it's a working type of committee, and we've also put Greg Rever's name forward for that as well. And if you have any other questions for me, the, I'll do my best to answer them, and I hope you read the minutes, because there's lots of information in there as well.
Can we go through the report first, just get some questions, if there are any questions about the report?
Yeah.
Yeah, I have a, I have a point that I would like to bring up, Your Worship.
Go right ahead there, sir, we're listening.
Yeah, it's on the appointment to the city's representative, Capital Cities Organization Board of Directors. I phoned the chair before the meeting, and I'd like to refer that back to the, back to the Strategic Planning and Priorities Committee to further discuss. Why? Why? Because that's not the name that was forwarded to the advisory committee. As you know, there was another name submitted, so I think, I think we need to send it back to the Strategic Planning and Priorities Committee.
Counselor Ramsey, do you want to weigh in on this issue?
Yes.
Do you recall what happened?
I was reading the...
Reading, yeah.
...our book on the weekend, too, and I seen that, too, and I said, well, I thought the council, because I wasn't going to sit on it.
No.
And then I, I just found out tonight for our meeting that if it doesn't go to the chair, it goes to the vice chair.
Right.
And then I heard that Counselor Duran at our meeting did not want to sit on it.
Right.
So then I asked for submissions, and Counselor Twill spoke up and said he would do it, and...
At the meeting?
At the meeting.
Okay.
And so we forward his name there, and then I found out tonight that that is not our role, and this takes me back to the CAC again, like, like everything we do, they just seem to overstep us. So, but I was explaining tonight that this is the way it happens. So, like, we all got to get on the same page and see what's going on here, like, like, if we're going to submit a name, why is that dropped off, and then they go after somebody else?
So do you want to defer that?
I would like to defer it, just so we all get on the same page, but, as I said, I found out from the, from the chair of CAC tonight how the thing worked, and, but that was five minutes before the council, because at that time, council would be very approved, Counselor Twill's...
Yeah.
Like, so my committee...
If I can just speak to...
No, maybe I'm wrong.
When, when we had our committee meeting, I don't recall any particular recommendation from anybody. It was, I mean, and you can check the minutes.
I, I didn't, I didn't hear the recommend, like, we didn't hear the recommendation, unless I'm, I didn't, I never miss a CAC meeting, so I, I don't recall it.
If, I, I don't think, Counselor Duffy, I'd like to speak to...
Can it not put up everybody?
Yeah.
What's that?
Like, does it have to be a member of the Strategic Priority Committee?
No, but let's...
The way the original, the way the original resolution read was that whoever was chair of Strategic Planning and Strategic Government Cooperation would be the representative for this. And if they were not, then it would go back to CAC, and CAC would then bring a recommendation to somebody else back. In nowhere in the resolution did it say that it would defer to a vice chair or a committee member. It would go back to CAC, for CAC then to bring a recommendation to council, and that's where we were when we brought the recommendation to Counsel Rever as the name to bring back to council.
Okay.
So, and then it was, Counselor Twill did call me today, but that was not part of, that wasn't part of any process that I was aware of, that he, that he was coming in to do that.
Counselor Yankoff, could we just do this? He's suggested a defer on that resolution, correct, Counsel Ramsey? Yes?
Well, yeah, but she...
If I have a question, Your Worship?
Yeah, I know, but I'm just trying to get the defer on the floor first.
Wait till we put the motion on the floor. We have that one first.
Can I just ask, where are we deferring it to?
Back to CAC.
Oh, okay.
Back to CAC, and get a recommendation from Strategic Priorities and Intergovernment Cooperation.
Well, she said that they don't take it all. I mean, the chair said that they don't take recommendations, like, they would pick somebody out of council.
Why would we ask?
No, no, go back to the committee.
Yeah, let's, Mr. Kelly, just read the rest.
Your Worship, the first motion is moved by Counselor Yankoff, second by Counselor McLeod, that council approves the appointment of Counsel Greg Rever as the city's representative to the Urban Vision 2050 Board of Directors, Your Worship.
Question? Question called?
Question's called.
Okay. All those in favor of Counsel Rever's appointment to the 2050 Urban Vision Board of Directors? Counselor Yankoff, yea?
Favorit.
Counselor Duffy? Oh, he's out. Counselor Duran?
If you, if, I'm trying to clear, you go with two, is this, is this the one that was questioned?
No.
No, this is going, this is, I'll read it over. The council approves the appointment of Counselor Greg Rever as the city's representative on the Urban Vision 2050 Board of Directors.
Okay.
Yea?
Yes.
Yea. Counselor Twill?
Favorit.
Counselor Rever? Oh, just vote for yourself.
See, now you're having this.
Now you can vote. Counselor McLeod?
Favorit.
Counselor Ramsey?
In favor.
Deputy?
In favor.
Counselor McCabe?
Yeah.
Counselor Bernard?
Favorit.
Okay, so that's 10-0 for that. Do you want to read the next one, sir?
Your Worship, it's on, it was 9-0.
9-0, okay.
Oh, sorry.
Your Worship, moved by Counselor Yankoff, second by Counselor McLeod, that council approves the appointment of Counsel Greg Rever as the city's representative on the Canadian Capital Cities Organization Board of Directors, Your Worship.
Okay. Counselor, do you want to defer?
Right, right, a question on...
I, you go right ahead, sir. Go ahead, and let's listen to what your question is.
Well, I just wondered, hearing what I'm hearing here, that the special priorities committee advanced the name, and I'm assuming that someone advanced Mr. Rever's name.
No. No, no, no. Let them finish there, Council Twill. Go ahead there, Council Bernard.
So maybe the chair, maybe the chair of CCC could let me know what both names advanced, or how would it look with Greg Rever's name?
Okay. Council Ramsey.
Council Bernard.
As I said, I'm actually the chair of CAC.
Oh, CAC, I'm sorry.
So when we did not get, we did not discuss Council Twill's name in this, there was no referral. There was no referrals, yes.
And the admin assistant is saying the same...
Yeah, so when we sat down, it was like, okay, we were thinking, okay, well, who in council might be interested? And there was a suggestion that said, well, since Council Ramsey doesn't want it, why don't we defer next to the vice chair, just as an idea of who might it be? So the committee thought that Greg Rever was vice chair, so we thought, okay, well, we'll put that forward. And then we found out that Bobby, Council Duran, was actually vice chair. So I contacted Council Duran and explained that we had suggested Council Rever, assuming he might be the vice chair, and it was our mistake, and we wondered if he would be interested, and if he wasn't, then we would still continue on with Council Rever. And Council Duran was fine. He was not interested, he was too busy with other things, so he was fine with us going to the next. Now, we didn't suggest it as Council Rever because the ruling was he was vice chair. That was just a way of a process of elimination, who might be another person that might be suitable for that law. And if any other committee member that was there, if you could please intervene if I've missed anything on that, that's what I know about...
And the admin assistant is saying that it's supported.
So I wonder, I'm trying to figure out why it would be any beneficial to send it back to special priorities when CAC is the one that makes the recommendation. So maybe it should go back to CAC.
Well, Council Bernard, the name came from the Strategic Planning and Priorities Committee because that committee has the responsibility of naming who is going to sit up and representing the city at the match conference, Capital Cities Conference.
No, they don't, CAC does.
No, that's not what I understand.
Well, check it out, that's why CAC's been set up under the MGA, they make recommendations for committees. So at the end of the day...
So why, so...
Hold on, let's just wait.
They make a recommendation to council.
Okay.
Yeah, but it came from our committee.
Right, so it came from your committee as a recommendation to the CAC. Right. So what I'm saying is, I don't know what's it says to put it back to the strategic priorities. If your name comes forward, then have CAC, if it was considered, let CAC be able to stand and make a recommendation next one.
Do we have a councillor that wants to defer it back to the Council Advisory Committee? Yea or nay? Is there anyone here to defer it back? Okay? No one's deferring it? You want to defer?
I'm just thinking that maybe if, it sounds like there's some complication, and if there's multiple people that are interested.
Okay.
Did we follow the process? We followed the process right, then no. If we didn't follow the process right, then yes. I'm confused whether we followed the process right or not.
So do you want to defer it because...
Yeah, let's try to figure it out. If I may, Your Worship...
Hold on, do you want to defer?
It's refer it back to the committee, Your Worship.
What's that?
Refer it back to the...
Why don't we get it referred back to the committee?
That's what we're saying, defer and refer, that's the sentence.
So just a note of caution, the next Capital Cities Commission meeting is beginning of March.
Yeah, so we have to meet before the CAC.
Oh, well then...
Okay, do you want to defer?
No.
Okay, no one wants to defer.
I know, I don't want to be...
Let's go around. Council Rever? Did you want to speak?
I can't believe it.
Did you want to speak?
Council McLeod, take your shot.
No, I, listen, I put my name forward for the FCM and backed down when someone else showed it first. I backed down from the city, so when this was presented, it was a good opportunity, and I certainly agreed to it, and that's pretty much it.
Council McLeod.
But Council Rever, do you...
No, 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 Council McLeod.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. As I understand, it come back to CAC after Council Ramsey said he could not fulfill, and that committee decided to defer it, who wanted it, but it really is a CAC thing, and it falls under that committee, so we just went to the next available person. Unfortunately, like Council Yankoff said, we should have asked Bobby first, because we got mixed up who the co-chair was. At the end of the day, it should be somebody on that committee.
That's right.
And the committee did select Council Rever.
No, the committee didn't, sir. Were you talking to Strategic Planning Priorities Committee?
No, the Council Advisory Committee.
Okay, so that's what we planned.
But the Strategic Planning Priorities Committee did submit a name, Council McLeod?
Yes.
It's not in the minutes.
CAC, no, as far as I know, we never, we didn't move it to the mix.
Well, it was submitted.
Did they go back, did they go back to CAC first?
Yeah, no, but it was submitted to your committee.
Okay, Council Twill, Council McLeod, we're going to vote on it, or we're going to...
Of course.
Okay, we're going to vote on it. Question's called. Okay, it is to approve, we got the...
Council Rever, Your Worship, to that committee.
Yeah, Council Rever to the Capital Cities Commission of Canada, four seats. Okay. Council Yankoff, yea or nay?
In favor.
Council Duffy?
In favor.
Council Duran?
No, there's just too many things here, Your Worship.
Council Twill?
No, you know, Your Worship, this is, what a terrible rotten process.
Yeah, Council...
It's really rotten.
Council Rever? They can't vote anyways.
I'm going to have to stay in the vote, I mean, it's me and all.
Favor.
Council Ramsey?
No, I'm still confused.
Council, Deputy Mayor Cody?
Yeah, I'm confused, too.
No?
No.
Council McCabe?
No.
Council Bernard?
Favor.
And we have six, six nay, and four in favor. Correct, Mr. Kelly?
No.
Yeah? Duran, Twill?
Council Rever couldn't vote, could he?
He's, sorry. So it's five.
He's supposed to vote, Your Worship.
He's supposed to vote, he's not going to. You have to vote, Greg.
Greg, you have to vote.
I haven't.
Yea or nay?
I'm, I'm the favorite one on the phone.
It's a tie, then.
It's tied. Refer it back to the committee.
So you have to make a motion, Your Worship, back to the back.
So someone has to make a resolution. Refer it back to the, refer it back to CAC.
I'll second it.
And any member of council interested, would you refer the name?
Any member of council interested, submit their name to the chair of the committee, Council Yankoff.
Just a question.
No, 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 wait.
What was Strategic Planning Priorities like?
Hey, leave it. Seconded by Council Yankoff, okay? All those in favor of the referral. One, two, three, four, five. Council McLeod, yea or nay? Referral.
Favor.
Yea. Council Duran?
Referring to the referral?
Referral, referral back to CAC.
Okay.
Yea. Okay. Council Twill, yea or nay?
I think it should go back to Strategic Planning Priorities Committee.
No, in the resolution, CAC, yea or nay?
Favor.
Okay, Council Rever?
Yep.
Who am I missing here? Council Bernard?
Favor.
Okay, so that's ten, zero. Is it? Did I miss someone?
I think I did.
Ten, zero, refer it back to the CAC. Good.
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, question, Mr. Kelly. Why was this discussed at Strategic Planning Priorities, and a recommendation was made to the advisory committee? Can you please explain that to me?
I don't have that right now.
You don't have it? Somebody must have it.
I'll go back and recapture into the minutes, and we will advise.
Yeah, you know what, there's a real disconnect, isn't there, between Strategic Planning Priorities and the advisory committee?
Thank you, Council Twill, and we'll get the verbatim minutes for that, too.
Just another example of how rotten it is.
Okay. I don't think we should be using that language, Council Twill, in a public meeting. I think that's going a little overboard, like we...
That's how I feel.
Well, you know what? You know what? We're adults and we're also councillors, so we should be responsible for our speech in this chamber. Don't, I don't really respect...
You know what, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
What is it?
I'm not going to have that discussion, but you don't use words that are dark, on the dark side. Anyways, motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Everybody's in. Thank you.